Good evening, this open joint meeting of the Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee, and Capital Planning Committee is being conducted in person and broadcasted via Zoom. Presentations and deliberation is expected only in person unless otherwise permitted by myself or the chairs of the other bodies listed on the agenda. Public comments are excluded from this meeting's agenda, and I'll get to that at the end. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see what you were sharing, so don't share your, um, don't screen share your computer. Anything broadcast may be captured by the recording. The meeting materials for this meeting are on board docs, and it's just a simple agenda. There is no packet this evening.
That's not, that's not true. There's, there's a material on board docs.
What material on board docs?
What we're about to see.
Oh, okay. That's the packet. Okay. Okay. I don't have that, but I make that. Sorry. Okay. So corrected, all the materials for this meeting are available on board docs, and we recommend the members of the public, all the agendas posted on board docs unless otherwise noted. We'll now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I or the respective chair of other bodies listed on the agenda will introduce each speaker on their agenda or our agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, we will provide any comment, questions, or motions until we indicate time to move to the next body's presentation. Approximately 20 minutes expected for the Capital Planning Committee's presentation, 15 minutes for each other body, and following presentations and general discussion will be conducted. That's really it. As far as the public comment goes, I think I, like, kind of talked to Greg about it. We've got permission to not have public comments. A town council, as we ask them, but the reasoning behind that is that this is a meeting for this group of volunteers who spend so much time on the budgets and the financial side of the town, town's government and workings. And I'm of the opinion that anybody that's online or in the room that has questions that has public comments to be made, they can make them at the next meeting of the individual committee or body that they wish to make a public comment to or have questions for. So I think that covers public comments, and not that we don't appreciate them or want them, it's just that I'd just rather move this meeting along amongst ourselves. And then if people have questions that are participating through Zoom or in the room, they can ask those questions of either of our boards as we get to the, we get to our next meetings. All right. Then the agenda does call for the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would like to stand and run for that, we just that. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice. Thank you very much. Introductions this evening. We'll start with Greg, work our way around the room, and then we'll just get right into it. Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. Krista Silver, the Chair of the Mayor's Select Board. Jeff Swamburgh, Select Board. Mike Stevens, Select Board.
Justin St. John, Select Board.
David Cavan, Select Board.
Peter Campbell, Finance Committee.
Nathan Wigfield, Finance Committee.
Katie Moore, Finance Committee.
Jonathan Markin, Capital Planning Committee.
Zadler, Capital Planning.
Benzi McConkey, Capital Planning.
Jonathan Morris, Capital Planning.
Elizabeth Almoda, School Committee.
Arlo Hogan, School Committee.
Tasha Rivera, School Committee.
Lexis Fishbender, School Committee.
Ben Zawski, Capital Planning.
Justin Markle, Public Works Director.
Paul Marmy.
Douglas Alamos, Council on Meeting Direct.
Stephen Zedding, Assistant Attorney.
Just wanted to point out first, Brian will be joining right as we're turning.
Okay. All right. And just so those of you that don't know, Lindsay McConkey, who is a member of the Capital Planning Committee, has also been elected by the citizens of Maynard to a seat on the Select Board, and she will start her term first week of July. So welcome. All right. So if the Capital Planning Committee would like to do their presentation, we'll start the meeting going on.
Or do you want me to stand and talk?
You can stand and you can sit, whatever you prefer.
There's a, there's a podium.
Whichever you prefer.
Yeah, whatever you want.
It's a small enough room that we can hear you.
All right.
Okay. Just tell me when to click.
Sure. I'm Douglas, I'm gonna talk about capital planning a little bit. It's a free fire presentation. I'm gonna do the first couple of minutes. Doug's gonna talk about some numbers, and then Lindsay's gonna talk about some ideas. If anyone minds, I can do the first slide. Like, again. So today we're gonna cover what is capital, what is capital planning going to do with our goals? What assets does the town have? What are our five-year project needs? How's the debt servicing going to work? What are the funding sources? And what are our recommendations for the future? Continue. So we plan for capital expenditures, these are municipal infrastructure and equipment. It's expensive, it costs over 25,000, at least, like, for at least five years. We also talk a lot about buildings. Buildings need to cost at least 50,000 to be a capital item, and it needs a useful life of at least 10 years. So lots of big things the town needs to buy. If you can continue to the next slide. So we've put together this capital projects. We all rate them individually and have interest scores together to see what priority the project should be, of course, the highest priority first. The six things we look at, not necessarily in order, are operational necessity, how well it aligns with community vision, can it support new growth to build our town? Will it improve public safety? Will it improve our compliance with legal regulations? And will it provide cost savings and efficiency for the town? All those words are tiny. All right. So these are the goals for what capital planning is trying to do. We recommend capital projects following the process I just described. We produce a recommended capital spending plan, and ultimately if you wanna stabilize and level the town's debt load, we recommend projects on an annual basis, ideally about 1.5 million's worth of funding. We wanna keep debt servicing costs reasonable, preferably below 10% of revenue and receipts. One of our goals here today, talking with everyone, is to promote greater coordination with all the town departments, and especially the four committees represented here. We want to solicit greater community participation of any capital projects to ensure everything best serves the community needs. Obviously, you don't want me deciding whether or not we're gonna build new DPW garage or not. That decision should be done by the town, and everyone here should have input. Also, we can keep a record of the town's assets and update it on an annual basis. Next slide. So what are the town's assets? What does Maynard own in terms of capital? So we've got, by now, it should be a little more than 187 million dollars' worth of mostly buildings. Real estate prices have been up. We have a lot of big capital. Got $6 million with the vehicles, another $4 million with the special property, and a great map that Ben made about where is everything that the town, Maynard owns. These are all our buildings and areas, probably. I think it's a great map. So, but, for what capital planning does every year, let's start with three o'clock. We meet with all the department heads. We ask, what are you gonna need for the next five years? What do you need today? What kind of capital can make your department better? They bring us a list of all the projects. We rate them according to the six things I described earlier. Eventually, Greg gets back to us with certified free cash numbers, where we try to figure out how much we'll be able to spend on capital this year. And we plan out which projects are the highest priority, the most critical to the town to do soonest. And we compile all those projects onto our list in ClearGov. ClearGov is excellent project compiling software, and for all kinds of other town finances, I happen to like it, and I think it's a huge improvement over Excel spreadsheets.
Well, I'll take it over there, yeah. So what I'm gonna do is kind of take you through that process that Doug just laid out in a little bit more detail, and get into the numbers of where the capital requests stand right now. I know everyone in the room kind of likes numbers and budgets, so I'll go a little bit deeper into all of it, how we approach it. So right now, the town in ClearGov, we took 2024's plan that all of the department heads put in, and we rolled it into a new plan of 25. We spoke with all the department heads earlier in the spring and talked about what their projects are, which ones needed to be rolled, which one didn't. We added some, we changed the amounts on some, and where we stand now is there's about 122 million in requests that we've scored. It doesn't include the water and sewer projects. They're gonna require their own approach as well, and we do think at some point we should probably add the transparency for water and sewer projects to the town, like we're gonna do with these, but we wanted to get our approach down first. So of the 122 million, what we do is we segregate them out, kind of based on the funds they're gonna compete for. So we've got 35.4 million that are gonna be going for what we call pay-as-you-go funds. So that includes the capital line item, the free cash. Well, I'm gonna get to it in the next slide. Anything that's kind of coming out on an annual basis that we pay for. We kind of determine what, what projects are gonna go after those funds, and then we carve out the big projects that are gonna be competing for debt issuance and need to issue debt. And then we kind of approach them with two different kind of lines of thought. So one thing I want to tell you about this one is I did segment out on the pay-as-you-go, the 35 million. There's a little bit of mix there. DPW is by far the biggest, so, but they cover a broad swath of the town. So what I did was I kind of carved out their traffic and safety. Justin and I talked their projects so that we can kind of look at those, or stormwater projects, roads. They have these like subsectors of projects that we did. The public works line item there is mostly like fleet and heavy equipment. And then education looks, looks a little lower. It doesn't include the, the Tiger Drive slash Fowler parking lots. I lumped those into facilities. So the facilities is more anything going towards a building or a parking lot or something like that. I needed to kind of get some, some segmentation in there, maybe play with the different things. So you should know that about that. So when we look at 35 million, we start to, we have to start with plan, are we gonna pay for this? Where are we gonna pay for this? And we can't really do that unless we start with the number of how much we're gonna pay for capital projects per year. So Greg, can you go on to the next slide, please?
What span is that 35 over if you didn't cover that?
Thirty, the, thirty.
How many years is that over, over requests?
Oh, that's gonna take, it's one of my slides later, if you want, wait for it. But it's gonna take about 32 years to cover that.
No, but how far forward are the requesters putting in those requests? So am I getting, you know?
It's current. So the requests just come in annually, and we just aggregate them, and then we roll over it, it doesn't get funded.
And you're asking for five-year look ahead, I think you said earlier, correct?
We, we planned, we planned out five years, yeah.
Right. So by, and I know, let's say for police cruisers are in there, am I looking at five years worth of police cruisers, which means there's another 25 years of police cruisers in the third year plan? I know it's coming in the next slide, that's not accounted for in that 35 million, correct? So there's, there's, this is.
That's five years with the police cruisers in there, right? Not, not 35.
Great, thank you.
But there are 35 years with the projects in there.
No, I, I.
But it's not, it's not an exhaustive list of 35.
No, and I, that's, I'm very clear now on what that represents.
This is an added contextual point. When we do roll things over each year, we do revisit the conversation with each department. So if something either is no longer needed or was funded in some other way, it comes out of this.
So I know Doug said 1.5 million, and people are probably thinking, you only got 50,000 in free cash, so we gotta come up with 1.5 million. And what we're trying to do is change the lens that we view capital spending. So what we usually do is pull out of the warrants, everything that funded a capital project, and we want to centralize that into the capital improvement plan. So we look at sources, free cash is obviously the biggest one. The capital line item, which is new and we're very grateful for, is one. We include a non-excluded debt, which right now our estimates are at 116,000. In 2025, we're gonna go to non-excluded debt. Our reasoning is that those are funding capital projects of the past. They were large capital items, and when that debt rolls off, that will free up general fund capacity like it did this year to possibly fund a capital line item. I think 20 something thousand for Fowler bond rolled off this year, and we ended up with 50,000 a capital line item. We'd like to keep that kind of going. And then receipts, the ambulance receipts, things like that, they, they're funding capital leases, so we include those. So this year alone, in 2025, the warrants, we're gonna spend 1.27 million on capital projects. So when we start to plan out year by year by year, we use that as our baseline to say what can we run for 1.25 million per year? Can you see by this thing? No? You go to the next one. All right. So this is how we do it. This is how we kind of lay out, and this is all gonna go into that capital improvement plan that we're gonna work towards to present in January. You can consider this, like Greg comes in January with his draft of the operating budget zero, and then every year, we, every month, we see it change. We expect this will probably adjust as we meet with department heads and the call. Grants come available, things like that. But we take a year, 2025, we know there'll be free cash at the end of 2025, and we kind of plan out what are the most important projects. The first thing we start with is take out all of our obligations. So we have to pay the debt servicing of 116,000. We have to pay the leases, that's about 300,000. Then we add in the recurring programs that we know we pay for every year, the sidewalk improvements, we generally spend 50,000 on those. The police cruiser replacement, 55,000. My slide's off here, and I apologize. That should be 55,000 next year, and in 2026, it should go to 110,000. I didn't work that in, I caught it later, but actually my colleagues caught it. But it should be 120, 110,000 in the following year. That covers basically like our recurring, and it gobbles up about 725,000 of the 1.25. So what's left is what we end up going to our scoring sheets with, and essentially, we started the highest scored one, and we say, all right, slot that in, how much is left? And we deduct it from the 1.25 until we can't fund another project. If we can't fund the next highest project, you'll see things like library parking lights at 10,000. That's probably not more important than personal protection equipment. In fact, I know it isn't on our scoring at 250. But when we got to the place where the equipment, the protective equipment would have been, we couldn't fund it and still stay under our 125 limit. So we go to the next highest project that we can fund until we, until we allocate the 1.25 million budget to the highest priority needs that we can fund. Anything left over, we propose putting back into capital stabilization, so this will be 29,000 next year. Again, this is a, a very rough draft. We talked with all the department heads about the projects. We talked amongst ourselves. We scored them individually, we averaged them. Usually, we have a much deeper conversation in the fall around, all right, Ben, you scored this 10, but Doug, you scored it a two for safety. Why are you guys reading that project? We kind of find a consensus around every project, and we find that if we're all in alignment on it, we, we talk about those last, it's the ones where someone rated something a 10, and someone rated it a two, and we're like, why, why aren't we agreeing? What, what, what did you hear that I didn't, vice versa? So we go through that. Okay? And I think when, when we do a CIP plan, you can expect those graphs from the front page, you can expect something like this going out five years. I couldn't fit five years on the slide, sorry. But we do have five years out, and we'll go forward. We did run a scenario on the next one, if you go to the next slide. We heard talk about eventually getting up to like 250,000 in the capital stabilization, capital line item. So we ran a scenario with 1.5 million, and obviously, it's gonna fund a lot more projects, right? Per year. The thing I really want to, to point out on this one is if you look in, in 2026, the Country Club roof, the, is 770,000. That project is in this scenario, but it's not in the last scenario. So I talked about 725,000 being taken by kind of obligations or recurring programs, and then leaving roughly, whatever, 525,000. That essentially means that we don't have any ability to ever plan a project over 500,000. So a country club roof, anything over 500,000, just never makes a plan. Under this one, a 1.5 million scenario, the 250,000 dollar line item for capital budgeting would allow us to go up to about 750, 780, somewhere around there. Projects that could come into the, the plan each year takes up a lot of the plan, but, but the recurring stuff would be covered, and some big items like the roof would be covered. So I put that in there to kind of, to really make that point. And the next slide, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the differences between the two. All right. So at a 1.25 million spending per year, that's gonna be about 2.1% of revenues spent on capital projects. At 1.5 million, it gets up to about 2.6 million. If you remember the, the Collins Report and Best Practices, they recommended 2.5% spending, and I think at the time, we're all like, there's no way we can spend 2.5, 2.5% on, on capital projects. But I think it's because we weren't looking holistically on how much the town currently spends on capital projects. So we're, I think, closer to that number than, than we think. You know, 31 years to fund all the projects? Sorry, Jeff, I said 33, but it's 31 years. Under the 1.25, 25 years under 1.5. The 19 projects unable to be planned at all, that's everything over 5.2, 525,000. And the 1.5, it drops to 13 projects that would be unplanned because they're above the 780,000 limit there. Some observations on both scenarios, they're highly dependent on free cash, and it makes, if we're not committed to spending a certain amount every year, it makes planning kind of obsolete because I, it's just every year, it's just like, what's the most important? Well, it's just fund that. There's no reason to plan out, because we can't project what we can do. So the fluctuations make it very hard to plan. It even makes it plan both ways. If we plan to pay for hoses and protective equipments, and that's taken 400,000, but now we've got, oh, a million in free cash, and the 400,000, if we cut that back, we could do a stormwater project. Now we also have to kick projects out. Even though we have more money, we're kicking projects out because a higher priority now meet meta threshold. It just becomes, I've been through it a number of years, it's just a pain to get through it all. So having a stable line item or, you know, amount that we're committed to will make our process, and I think the Tribe Quad Board can really help us maintain this dedication. So those projects, those 13, 19 projects that are unfunded, these are the projects that are big. They're like a million, 1.2 million, 1.5 million. Most of them are fall into this, this gray area. They're, they're stormwater projects, all the stormwater projects seem to be important, and they seem high. Traffic safety projects are big. They're all a million to 1.5 million to redo one of those intersections. And then larger facilities projects like the, the parking lot Fowler is one that comes to mind, I think that's estimated 850,000. All of these projects can never make it in our capital improvement plan because we don't have any capacity to pay for it in any given year. So they just won't. So we either need to find grants, or we need to pray for a large windfall on, on free cash in order to pay for these projects, and just, it's not a way to plan, it's just to hope. So this probably fosters two discussions. One would be, I know there's talk of the stormwater enterprise type of revenue stream. There's some support to be made for that, that none of those projects will ever be able to be funded, in my projections, out of any general fund or pay-as-you-go. So that should come into the discussion around stormwater. And then the next discussion would be, well, why don't we just bundle a bunch of them together and do a bond issuance, right? Because they're big enough where maybe we do a $5 million bond issuance, and we'll knock off two or three of those projects. So that's a good segue onto the next slide, where we start to think about how much capacity do we have to pay with debt? So what we've done is we've taken the four big projects that everyone's talking about, and everyone knows. We still, Green Meadows is a go, but we still need to issue some debt for it. The Senior Center, which I estimated at 12 million, and, you know, again, we don't know that number, but I have, we have to make assumptions. That's my assumption. Wellington and Chatham both did senior centers very recently, and they were like 10 and 15, so I kind of took, went in the middle. So that's where they fell, I mean. The bleachers at 3.5 million is the last number I saw was 3.5 million, so I, we ran the estimates of that. And then Justin's DPW yard request, I think is around 24 million. So we used a 5% interest rate, because I think that's the borrowing rate on the green metal bonds, and we project out what the debt servicing costs to these four bond issues. We figured the DPW yard probably wouldn't see bond issuance for maybe another five years. Senior Center might be competing with it at that time, so five years. Bleachers could be as soon as 2027, so I put that out there. The numbers, we can change these assumptions, we have all the spreadsheet built, to change these based on feedback from this, this board would be great as we plan this stuff out. But if we go to the next slide, this is what it's gonna do to our projected debt servicing costs. So the Green Meadow School doubled our debt servicing costs in 2025, and it brought it up to, I can't, a little over 5 million, somewhere around there. As you can see, the bleachers, I have the orange on the bottom hitting in 2027, boosted a little bit. By 2029, because of existing debt that's gonna roll off, we come down a little bit. And then if we issue debt for the DPW yard and the Senior Center in, say, 2030, we're projecting our debt servicing costs to be, you know, close to $8 million a year. And I know that, like, there was an email going around this week, I didn't give it enough thought yet, like, on maybe, there are other bond issues that could come, it was kind of like, what if we rolled these together type of stuff? But we need to look at this when we consider that type of stuff. And that red line right there is what our debt servicing could be if we wanted to maintain a 10% limit on our, our debt capacity. So that might be a threshold that we don't want to go above. So we can see that we're, we're facing some tough, tough decisions going out when we think about these big bond issuance. All right, if we can go to the next slide. This is my last slide. So that 10% limit, this is a look at our debt servicing costs, is of around 11 with Green Meadow, that's a typo, it's not 12, 11, close to 11. It dips a little in 2009, rises up the highway to 12.8 in 2030, then it starts to drop. I don't know what Moody's uses for our credit rating, but percentage of our debt servicing costs to our revenue make the one. So we need to consider this. We need to consider the amount of our total debt outstanding is probably a factor in our Moody's rating. And then also, Collins Center recommendation is to look at the tenure of your debt. So he, they recommend 50% of your debt be due he, they recommend fifty percent of your debt be due within the next ten years and then the rest be further out. And I haven't done enough looking at the debt structures to see where that is. I think what's needed to really give you guys a good look of these big projects and how we're going to fund them is to look at our debt servicing out further than two thousand and thirty two. And then maybe, you know, this would strengthen the argument for the senior center possibly being a lease for ten years because that twelve million dollar bond issuance, depending on how far we look out, we may be better to support that bond issuance in maybe, you know, I don't know, two thousand and thirty five or two thousand and thirty six. I haven't, I don't, my spreadsheets only go up to two thousand and thirty two, so. But I liked that I could look at the debt servicing levels. And I think as a town, we should be planning our debt so that it's not impactful to the taxpayers. If they're going to roll off because of the debt, we should opportunity maybe to say, we can put that, what you're already paying to another debt service to fund the senior center. But right now, it looks like two thousand and twenty nine and two thousand and thirty are going to be potentially big years for debt debt servicing costs on the rise, if if that's projection you're right. Sorry, I went kind of fast, but I probably used up all of our time. Lindsay, I'm going to turn over Lindsay to kind of take us home with some recommendations and some thoughts on on when we go through.
Thank you. So as is probably not a surprise, our main recommendation is to spend more money on capital project shocker. That's the main recommendation from the Capital Planning Committee, is just to increase capital funding overall. One way to do that is, John has articulated, is to think about looking at our debt schedule and what debt is retiring and anything that is being serviced out of the general fund, rolling that into a capital line item, so that the Capital Planning Committee has a reliable source of funding. Free cash is a lifeline, but it is not reliable and it's variable. And so it's not a great way for long term planning. And I think if we want to get to any of these big projects, some of which are nice to have and some of which I think are urgently needed, we need to get to a place where we're not hamstringing ourselves every year, just funding whatever the greatest emergency is. And that's kind of the place that we are right now. And I think funding that capital line item just gives another resource for the Capital Planning Committee to be thinking about more long term planning. Adding to the capital stabilization fund that we've been doing in little bits and pieces each year, but something like the Fowler HVAC system that came up last fall that I think was two hundred and thirty, two fifty about. That's the kind of thing that capital stabilization has to be paying for if we have more money in it. Or dream a dream where we could think of a time when the town actually has more money than anticipated and maybe we could pay down actual principal on that capital stabilization. So it's just, I think, a good practice to be in that we haven't done a great job with. Key debt servicing at ten percent, John covered that, but the recommendation is ten percent. We're currently just under eleven percent. And I think with all that debt that you saw in that debt projection graph, we're going to be a little over twelve percent in a couple of years as we continue on the path that we're going. Using the asset inventory to plan. So thanks to Ben. We, he took a list of insured assets in town and he created a full inventory out of it. It's a work in progress. I'm sure there are things that we're missing. But I think that we can be a little more diligent about using that to to get a better understanding of, you know, in forty years, we have a dump truck that's going to reach its end of life. And so we are going to need to purchase a new one. So let's plan for taking on that debt as, you know, as needed. In order to be able to do that effectively, these other things in advance of that to the left on this slide also need to happen. We can have funded capital line item when you have better capital stabilization account. So, but I do think that there is an opportunity there to do some better planning. It also is, is, I think, an opportunity for this group collectively to look at places where we might be able to align capital projects and capital needs for greater savings and efficacy. I think we tend to plan in a pretty silent fashion, siloed at a committee level, at a department level. And if we're looking across all of these assets, I think we can think about in five to ten years, if there are buildings that are needed, can we possibly merge those projects for for cost savings? And then lastly, just finding innovative and alternative funding sources. So Community Preservation Committee is the first that comes to mind. I think that there is the opportunity to really align with, you know, with community, I'm going to call them CPC, I'm going to call us Capcom, because it's real confusing with the both CPC. To have Capcom and CPC planning in tandem. They have their annual schedule and I know they have a pretty strict mandate in terms of what is under their purview and what they can fund based on their mandate. But there is a lot that comes to Capcom that could be funded out of CPC funds. Fortunately, Jonathan Brettz has been our liaison to CPC. He's been going to their meetings. And I think, you know, one or two meetings, collective meetings a year would be helpful in thinking about what we have in the queue for Capcom that actually could be funded under their mandate legally out of CPC. Another thing, you know, I think you brought this up, Tom, and I thought it was an interesting idea, is just looking at other possible like innovative or alternative funding sources. So right now, there is a seventy five thousand dollar WADM studio in the queue for school capital projects. It's unlikely we're going to get to that anytime soon, given that we have stormwater, you know, projects that are about to potentially damage roadways and personal property and all the other things that you saw. So is there an opportunity to raise money from alumni at WADM? I don't know. I'm sure this is things, these are things that you thought of. But I I think that this collective body needs to be thinking creatively about how we can fund some of these things out of the traditional process that we've been using. Which frankly, my final point, I promise, which is just general alignment across all of our committees and and boards. I think the Quad Board meeting, this meeting, I don't know how often we're planning on having it, but I think we should be having it regularly and capital planning should be a recurring item. And there should be a regular update on where we are and what is needed. And we should be thinking as a collective body. And this way, I think the Capital Planning Committee can aggregate the information and synthesize it and organize it and prioritize it. But capital planning is not a, it's not a governance committee. It's an advisory group and make recommendations. But if we are not all collectively planning, if we're just planning in our committee silos or our department silos, we're not ever going to get there. I think it has to be a collective conversation and Capcom can inform that conversation. But it also needs to be informed by opinions of all of the people who are in this room because all these projects are coming from all of these different departments that we're all collectively managing. I think that's it. Basically, just the capital planning is a team sport, so everybody needs to get on board. And then I don't know if we have tougher questions, but we left that open.
That's the, we're going along once to ask questions now. At the end, it doesn't really matter, but we can do it now.
The question, how often do you, do you think we should like, how often you feel like any changes that are made throughout the year? I mean, should we be doing this once a year or twice a year?
I don't, I don't know that I should be the person who's about to put new meetings on everyone's calendar. I'd say for the Quad Board meeting, I mean, bare minimum once a year. I think probably twice a year would be more effective. And then I think that there are other groups that that might be able to meet, you know, in pairs. But I think that this group, I mean, it has to be a collective a collective process. It it can't just exist with Capcom. It can't just exist with select board. It it has to be a group conversation because if we're talking about things like, you know, bleachers, for example, we have bleachers and we're going to, we're going to need to take on debt with bleachers. And we also have things like the stormwater project. It's just topic binding is coming up in this presentation, but if we can only, if we can pick one of those things, I don't know that it should sit with the Capital Planning Committee to decide what we go to the town to say, what should we take on debt for? And I think we need to also be conscious of the fact that it's also incumbent upon all of us to be presenting this information accurately to voters so that they understand what we're asking and then what's coming. Like, when you fund one thing, what's not getting funded? So I'd say twice a year. I know everybody has a different opinion.
I would also say that the Budget Subcommittee is probably a good place to bring more capital planning into the discussion because it's pretty good from an operational standpoint, but we don't spend much time on capital. There's an opportunity, which is cross-referencing.
I just had a clarifying question when you were mentioning about the the debt and Moody's is with the assumption, and I don't know how it's calculated, so, you know, I might err here. Is the assumption, is it a debt-to-income ratio about when you do that? So for instance, if we are for some reason over the next, I don't know, five, six years, we start getting more revenue or, you know, our our receipts are going up higher or whatever.
So you know, when I did
deposits like into our stabilization accounts more. Would, so is the assumption basically that we're, that we're static, what we are?
No, I'll tell you how I calculate it.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I took our revenues from this year. I used our two and a half percent growth rate. I added three hundred and fifty thousand for new growth, that's great, Dust. And then in the years that those debt issuances were done, I added those to revenue because those will be excluded debt services. So when you add up those numbers and you divide by the debt servicing costs, that's what we'll put up.
So it makes the assumption of the three, three hundred K or a proxy new growth annually and it's not taking anything from our stabilization accounts to to offset any of that debt. It's like fully bonding for a moment. Okay.
Taking some stabilization, I don't think would be a relative.
No, I I didn't know if some of those, like, in order to bring down what you're bonding for, you know, so like we've done, we take some, so I, that I think what I just wanted to understand was that it was bonding full or
Yeah, bonding full. Yeah, I didn't look at like DPW gets a ten million dollar remit off, so that's not in those projections.
Like, yeah.
It's just, we do these whole bond.
I have a question. First of all, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Appreciate that. On your slide about town requests and funding sources, you said it does not include the water and sewers project, like water and sewer project. And so obviously, some of that at least would be under the enterprise fund, but is there a a recognition that there will indeed be costs beyond the enterprise fund, or the enterprise fund can handle?
So right now, we we have them all. We have all the requests, and they're go. But we haven't had the time to go through them and kind of say, these would probably go into the out of the general fund, which pays as you go, they come outside. So we haven't done that analysis yet, but we have the data. We just haven't had the the time with that.
Okay.
Oh, we talked, I talked to Justin quite a bit.
Right, I presume you would, yeah. So I just want, I'm just curious to know where that fits in in terms of, you know, possible proportion. Is it likely to be a very significant increase in what we're looking at, or is it something that can kind of slide in without changing very much? Or do we just
John took it out because he thought it would be too depressing.
So if you have thirty six point five, you'd probably be looking at fifty to sixty five million in the five year protection. But the difference is the revenue support, so water and sewer revenue support our CIP plan. Our CIP within water and sewer is far more advanced than our general CIP. And that's what the Capital Committee is really looking to enhance and support, is our general CIP to match the the complexities of our water and sewer. The difference between the two, so Lindsay's claim, is the general CIP is a competition. The water and sewer enterprise funds, because they're enterprise, enterprise funds aren't competing against anything else but themselves. So that's why they're far more advanced in our CIP process than what you're seeing from today.
The two point five from the Collins recommendation, which is around the one point five million dollar scenario you have, do you feel it's hard for me to tell, the the overall impression is that we're falling behind at our current free cash rates, right? Is that two point five or one point five million dollars approximately? Do you feel we're treading water at that point? Are we starting to regain? Because I'm also looking at that thirty five million over five years, and that's seven million dollars a year of requests. So is that one point five million or around two point five, is that enough for us to start to get away from that? You know, living emergency to emergency sort of mentality that we've been under, or do we need to put more in?
We're, we're, we're starting to sink.
That's current. Okay, okay, I got you. Nope, I think I, looking at, all of you looking at each other kind of answered my question.
Yeah, but I do, I also think that's, again, collective decision, but yeah, it's still not enough.
If I may, the the other thing that we have to think about regarding the five year plan is this five year plan that we think about right now. So think about yourself like five years ago, your finances. Think about how much has changed. In five years, it's not going to be that, oh, we're done with everything. We only have the other stuff to undo. In five years, actually next year, we'll have a whole new year of things coming down the pipe. And then the next year, we'll have a whole new thing. And that's just going to be the problem we're going to see here, that those other things we're not even thinking about or looking forward to are also on the horizon. We need to be thinking about and hoping and praying that we can get in front of or get at least in a financial position where we can get in front of it when those either emergencies or planned capital events come up.
I also want to, I feel like, I mean, like a little bit of doom. And I think that some of the like, what would mitigate all of this is just some of the planning that we've outlined, like, planning, you know, for assets that are going to reach end of life. Planning, like, looking at the debt servicing and planning for where that cash is going to go because it's going to have a general fund, like, there is plenty that we can do to mitigate the current situation for for becoming a disaster. It's not like, you know, the the one point five is going to be so woefully short that we're going to be a complete disaster in ten years, I don't think. Unless something new comes up that's terrible. But it, I think we just, we have to collectively figure out how to just do better than we have to do.
I think one of the things we have to do with the list of assets which is going to be put together and say, go real hard, look at that and project out is when end of life comes into play, there may be some surprises in that list that we're going to think about right now that that is going to be coming up soon, that we think, I think. Some of the things we have to do is see whether our campus is complete. I'm not sure we have, you know, any storage facilities on that. And that are now an issue. And I think the so we're going to have to come back to the department and say, when is this thing going to end? When is end like? Because that's going to impact greatly any, any capital funding.
I have a question about the projecting. Just in thinking about what things are coming and we're obviously not funding everything, so what we know now is is an estimation now. But does your projections factor in escalation of project as well? So that's something that we have known as well, right? Those are what we envision, like, the roof cost was eight hundred thousand now. But should we be adding in like a four percent, say, I'm just thinking about the bleachers, us delaying from the spring to the fall? Is, and just from that. So I don't know for the public's awareness, if we should be adding a line of escalation is approximately, I don't know, there's a number of sound that we could even go on, but really that number only increases, you know. And also it might help with other new projects that might come down that are unexpected. But, you know, don't make it to their end of life that we plan on.
Couldn't agree more, right? That's exactly, I think, what Lindsay's saying with being able to see, like, think about that, like, that's a trade off that we as a town should be thinking about. And saying like, wow, you know, we delay this project, then it might cost more. And this one, it's okay. It's not going to be that big of a deal. Like, you know, those are the trade offs that we should be collectively discussing. So couldn't agree more.
I will say, with Claire, when we roll from year to year, we update the costs. But the good thing is that we have the original costs. So when we've rolled something five years in a row, we'll be able to go back to the point twenty four and say, this was originally a five hundred thousand dollar project. Now it's a one million dollar. And we can start to learn from that about which ones are going to escalate and then kind of put something in place to kind of say, we delayed more years, this is going to go up by twenty six.
This is going to cost us more this much about five years.
Any else, those guys?
I don't know if you're sharing these slides after there are, you don't have to show them now, but there are appendices and stuff also just showing our timeline and what our, you know, capital planning missions.
It's been great to see the maturity of the Capital Planning Committee's work evolve over the last several years. So really, really appreciate all the not just work this year, but in the cycles leading up to this, to get us to where we are today with these planning tools. So thank you.
Tim Call?
I had a question, actually.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm curious about like the lower priority items that aren't getting funded year to year. It sounds like you take whatever is the highest priority and also the highest dollar value. And I'm wondering, it's a little going on with yours and Natasha, if there were less expensive items that are being poured that might be a more effective use of the funds? Do you consider like, like timeliness and effectiveness in your rating system?
Yeah, I would say we start off very quantitative with our scores and trying to move it in, but then we have a a very qualitative discussion around, is this the right project in this year or does it make more sense? You know, something like the the teacher refresh, PC refresh programs. It probably wasn't the highest score going in this year, but like, those are the things where it's like, we committed to half, what about the other half? We'll reach out to the schools and say, you know, what do you guys think about the second half of that? And they might say, well, now the roofs And they might say, well, now the roofs are a little bit more important than that. So if you have to pick between those two, whereas we might have said, well, we already did have the teacher refresh, we should probably do the other half. They'll say, no, no, the, the school, the roofs are much more important. And then, and then it becomes a little more quality.
I was also wondering about like the total dollar sum of all the different projects. It sounds like every, every like committee can put in their requests, every department can put in their own requests. Is there probably anything that they want in the next five years? Is there any process for just saying like, no, that's never going to be a, something we can fund? Or does everything just go somewhere on a list of priorities? Do you have like a longer and longer list of those things that are never being funded?
Right now, we're just getting a whole list of everything that, that is on the radar of everyone. And every year, we will remove things that they said that's not long enough as they're, but. And then we plan on distributing the capital improvement plan and talking to the department heads around, you know, these, these aren't going to be funded in the next five years just because they're a higher priority stuff. And to their credit, all the department heads know that going in. They know that, they just want to know that these are the types of things they do, so.
And actually, one point, sorry, just about capital planning committee. The capital planning committee is not in the business of generating project requests or saying, oh, you know what? Thing might be nice to have, we should put this into the queue. That all comes from the department, so we are also not in the business of removing anything unless we're told this in the law or our family.
And I do like the idea of having a list that even though we may not be funding it in the next five years, we know what's on the list. Because we never know when a granting opportunity or something might come up, we can look to the list and be like, that project, even though it's two thirds of the way down our list, could qualify for that earmark. So maybe we could do it. We could provide that type of insight to say, these projects could go for these brands. But there's, there's value in having that data.
You know, what's scary to me about this conversation is we're talking here strictly capital. We'll move on in the meeting and we'll talk about operational and the operational costs that are expanding ever increasingly. Then you have moved to the next step about cost of living for our taxpayer in residence. And that's the real discussion that we have to get to is how do we work that aspect, the entirety of everybody, you know? Because, you know, we spoke earlier about silos. In a, in effect, this conversation has been a silo. Because we're not talking about other, we're not talking about water and sewer other than the capital projects. But there are other issues with water and sewer that expand costs. There are operational costs within the town government that we want to, we want to consider as, that may add costs to the operation of the business beyond the annual increases. There, I know the schools have issues that they want to address relative to, to, you know, the curriculum and, or whatever it may be. We have serious discussions to talk about, not only about capital, but about operational budgets and priorities. And that's the discussion, I think, this group needs to have, is priorities.
I get what you're saying. I, to some degree, for that discussion, think we should exclude water and sewer. Aside from whatever capital is going to flow into the general fund, water and sewer is a service. It costs what it costs to provide it. We need to provide it responsibly with an eye toward what's going to happen in the future. And I get that it's an added cost to taxpayers and a burden, but that it costs what it costs to provide water and sewer. And we should fund that and deal with that and not have that be part of the conversation. For when we start talking about tax increases for, you know, debt or, or whatever. I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I think that's a fair observation.
Okay, right, I was presenting. I'm sorry. Ben Call?
This is a fellow committee.
I don't know.
Julian, why not? Julian in charge?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear you? Yes.
Okay, great, yeah. We do not have a lovely presentation like the Capcom does. That was a great presentation. But I did want to discuss with the committees that we are doing ongoing three year future planning. So this is based on the general fund budget, so sort of that big piece of the pie that we usually look at. We're also not currently considering the enterprise funds in this future projection planning. We are using this based on the last five to seven years of our spending of the general fund and using that to project out three years in the future. And considering that capital needs is not currently captured in this projection, that's why we thought this discussion today was useful. Because these are not, they're not necessarily things that we have captured in our, we're currently using spreadsheets in the past. So I think it's important for that to be considered in this future projection planning. So if, say, for instance, the bleachers or the senior center or the DPW garage is included in the future, those line items are not currently in our future planning. So this is something we're discussing with the different committees and boards to see how we might be able to make different scenarios, showing the overall budget as well and how that could impact the planning. So, and we think that, we also are networking with other surrounding finance committees to learn how they future plan and account for these capital and operational expenses that are a bit harder to plan for. So a big thanks to John on Capcom for making that introduction for us to some other members committees in other towns.
I think that's it.
Julian, will, will the output, will the output of this view, is this based on some of the work that Bob currently has done? Will the output be a tool that's usable for scenario planning? What's, what, what, what are we expecting this to look like?
That's a great question. So right now, it is currently a spreadsheet. We're trying to take learnings from the capital planning committee to understand if we could import this into something, basically into the ClearGov system. But we're not entirely sure how that asset works. We, we've reviewed some of the uses that the Capcom has for it, but we think it would be a different module of the software. And that's something I need to figure out with Greg, if that costs more and, and how that works. So currently, it is an Excel spreadsheet.
Thank you. Good, thank you.
And Julian, I, just a quick question. Do you, when you're putting this together as far as future planning, are you planning according to what the anticipated needs of the town are? Or are you planning it with a specific budget limit in mind? Like a three percent increase or a five percent increase or whatever over the cost of the year before?
That's a great question. So currently, currently, we are using a percentage. So we're taking the average of the past five to seven years of each of the major line items. We're not going super in detail to try to give an idea of what the future might look like. And we're hoping that models like this might allow you to more easily see, you know, if you plug in two million dollars here for a certain project, what will that look like for the overall budget? To get an idea for potential impact on the taxpayer. So it, it is a little, I, I like to call them squishy models. So I, I think that when you're future planning something this complicated and going several years in the future, that's something to consider, especially since in the past five to seven years, those years do also include COVID times, which did make the budget a little bit wonky. So it is like possible we can go further back in the past too. But I think it's also, there's also certain line items that we also do need to consider. Like in the past couple of years with the building out of, you know, the market basket area and things like that. We had years where we had very high free cash, which we're probably not going to see going forward in the future. Or revenues. So I think that's also something to consider, that there might need to be a smoothing of the data or some kind of a correction potentially for some of the lines, which had really high years or potentially really low years.
Thank you.
All right, I guess that brings us to the schools.
Thank you, Julian. Yeah, so Brian, we, well, just to kind of give a quick intro. At our most recent Budget Subcommittee meeting, it was requested that the school provide some information now that we have our contract. When we, you know, these are largest union finalized, of what, a rough estimate based on certain assumptions of expenses and what that contract might be looking. And I think Brian had worked with Wayne the past two weeks to put something together, moving out to FY twenty nine. So Brian, I'm going to pivot to you. These documents are ones that, nothing pretty as Capcom, so I just want to say it's a spreadsheet. And then there's another spreadsheet. But just for some informational purposes, understanding where we, where we're looking. All right, Brian.
Okay, thanks. Greg, if you want to, yep, thank you. That's it, that's perfect for now. That actually, it'll probably make a lot of sense if you haven't seen it already. But you can see we went from FY twenty five and we tried to do some projections based on, we made some assumptions, quite frankly. So you can see FY twenty five and then through, for every year, we looked at salaries, which is our major expense and expenses. And salaries, we just took the percentage increase from the collective bargaining agreement for, we used twenty four to get to twenty five. And then twenty five and twenty six are agreed upon. And we, again, we're just making an assumption that we could settle at two point seven five. So we used that for the following three years, which you can see there's an increase in salaries, expenses. Not knowing exactly what was what, we chose three percent based on some historical data. Could be a little bit lower. We have the solar project up and run, it's not up and running, but it's completed, waiting for Eversource to come and hit the switch. So maybe that goes down a percent to two percent as an increase on that number. Doesn't change it drastically, which then that blue number is the school budget. So what I found interesting is we did the town allocation in three different increase levels. We historically looked back and it seemed like it was right around two point seven five that Greg typically has allocated or the select board has allocated to the schools. And you can see that that deficit of what the school spends and what the town allocates basically grows at two point seven five percent. But if you scroll down and you get to three percent, it starts to level off. And actually, if, and this is part of this larger conversation, but if we get to an allocation of three point five percent, maybe even three point two five, but three point five percent allocation, then the delta between what the schools are spending based on salaries and expenses, without any programmatic cuts at all, maintaining the class size, maintaining the programming, maintaining the athletics, really keeping the school system whole, that deficit decreases, starting, and I think it's like FY twenty seven to twenty, and then by the time we hit, and I think it's FY twenty nine, the last column, that delta is an easily achievable delta for us to use revolving accounts for. So I, I found this exercise incredibly interesting in terms of telling a story about budgeting and, you know, what does it take to run a school system? Some assumptions we made is that WAVM funding would remain consistent. The one add we would like to make would be an athletic trainer for safety reasons, and there's no other anticipated additional staffing. We do recognize Medicaid funding is likely to be reduced and school choice continues to decline. Utilities, we just made the assumption at three percent, it may be a little bit less, but we weren't sure. Not pretty, but I think insightful. I think helpful to just look at the big picture in relation to other town departments. So Wayne, I know you're on there. Thank you very much. You were instrumental in pulling this together based on data and really playing it out for multiple years, which is always a little scary when you don't know what you don't know. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, Brian, thank you. And I, I know that there was just another slide. I don't, again, I don't.
Oh, yeah, Greg, if you want to, I think the other slide was capital requests?
Brian, before we leave this slide, can you go back to the top, Greg? Is that number two point seven five as a historic increase consistent with your numbers, Greg? Just not questioning the data.
Yes. Yeah, for the most part, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I just, yeah, it hasn't, I would say that's more of a recent allocation, right? I think if we go back to like twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, like the numbers were like closer to three, three point five. So that is more of a recent turn down, just to recognize for anyone who may not have that historical understanding, that two point seven is probably more of a COVID, post-COVID, planning budget, budget plan effort.
And so the school budget here, the delta is between the school budget and the town allocation. So does it account for other funding sources that are not from the town allocation?
So the first, the first, FY twenty five, that's where they started at that negative seven ninety. And then there's that amount for seven ninety that we're, you know, providing to offset that for FY twenty five. We don't know how much the funds are going to be, you know, because we're going to, pretty much we're, they're going to be down to very low amounts. We're not sure how much, so it could be a hundred thousand. As Brian was mentioning, like school choice is not being funded at the same level. So that's the hard part that we can, historically be on that. I don't think we have this slide here, but when we looked previously at how much we rely on those alternate funding sources in prior years, they averaged around like between one and two hundred thousand dollars for a period of time. They've had this, this, this year FY twenty five is the largest, so it will deplete most of them.
And, and so this is fees and things that you get Estor fund, I assume, would have been a hump over the last couple of years for that. What do you expect your long term, non-town side from those things to be, let's say in the post-Ester era? I think a percent of budget, maybe.
Percent of, I'm not sure if I quite understand, but I have Estor funds, so we know that Estor funds are sunsetting. The positions that have relied on Estor funds are also have been eliminated. And so the, the staff that were in there have gone into back to their regular positions, been some shuffling as well. There is been two positions right now, I think we talked about it for just budget. There's a nurse who has data on that they've incorporated an extra because of the needs are still existing. So that has been built into our, our budget at this point. And a counselor as well, that they've had some.
But my question is, from your revenue sources besides what you get from the town allocation, how much do those add up to? Before, you had Estor funds that was not part of the town allocation, right? That was.
It varies. They're not consistent.
Right, so what are you, what are you planning on in the future post-Ester funding?
I'm saying that those are not consistent funding sources that we can allocate operational expenses to all the time. We don't, we don't know what those are. So like a circuit breaker, that's what a reimbursement that you get in the arrears, depending on what you spend in one year. So that can help offset special education, but we don't know what that amount will be at this point because we don't get that allocation. It's built on what you spent in a, in a prior year. The preschool, there's a revolving fund for preschool. And again, that depends on how much paying tuition might be coming in for kids who don't have IEPs. There might be, so that also is a variation because if there are services that are required, they don't, you don't, we wouldn't charge. There's not a charge that's required to pay that, so that can fluctuate on an annual basis. Transportation is one of those fees that we do impose and it's subsidized by the budget. So it's really not like bus fees. It's not something that has, we were increasing our costs for, but it's always something that we're looking at. But it certainly doesn't cover the, the full amount for transportation needs. And then athletic fees or all those fees, you know, those are fees that we do try to bring revenue in. Rental, I think is the other thing that we're, we're always looking at is just how we can, space rental, that kind of thing. So that's probably the one area that is, we're hopeful. But we also know like when it comes to like field maintenance, that is, that is one area that is, you know, really advertising is looking for, you know, for that money to offset those needs there as well. So, but beyond that for regular operational staffing, there's not much that we can count on consistently for budget planning purposes.
My question was, if you had all those things, is it one percent of the school's budget, two percent, is it higher, is it lower?
So for FY twenty five, it's eight hundred, so if you want to look at just, I don't know, if you want to look at that one amount, that one amount, you can say that.
But that's coming from your, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Got it.
Right, so our total expenses, you want to, to the percentage, I don't have that, but that will be the amount that we're using for operational for all those revolving funds for FY twenty five.
But you're expecting that to go down?
Yes, absolutely. Brian, sorry. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good. Go ahead. What is, so Brian, what do you wanna do?
The capital, did you wanna just show the, I know there's just one small.
I think Greg, the next page, it's like a two-page thing. It was just all the capital requests that was shared with capital. Committee earlier this year.
And just while you're pulling that up, I just wanna, you know, thank, I know Lindsay, I know you, you've been kind of the liaison with the school and so just thank you for your work. Cause I think it's really been very helpful to get the school kind of thinking about how you guys are, are working and prioritizing. So I just know that a lot of this has come out of that effort as well. So much appreciated. Brian, too.
Yep. And so you can see, I mean, if Wayne wants to talk about that, he can. I'll put him on the spot, but basically this is, go ahead, Wayne. You're here. And it says Wayne's data. I like that. Wayne's world, right?
Hi, everybody. So our, our, our capital request. There are some things that in FY twenty four, obviously that say zero because they weren't identified to us as an issue. Two of those are. The WAVM studio lighting. What I'm, what I'm told is the lighting. Is dated such that. I equate it to. A headlight and a nineteen seventy car versus a headlight and a twenty twenty five car. And I think you know where I'm going. That blue light is a lot clearer. And they, they say that it has an effect on. You know, broadcast when, when they're, they're filming someone. The Fowler auditorium upgrade, those you that have been to town meetings and auditorium. Have experienced. Some of the audio problems that they have, the projection is not of a quality that someplace like that should be. So there's money that was being asked for that. And then the high school. The lighting controls. It costs us to spend money because they don't turn off when they're supposed to and, and it's hard to maintain the proper lighting. And sometimes the lights are off and they should be on. It can create safety issues. So that is the lighting controls. If you wanna scroll down, Greg, I don't know if there was anything below there. Flooring replacement. We can and have asked for that every year. Between the middle school until certain extent, even the high school. And Green Meadow, even though, you know, we're gonna replace Green Meadow, we still have to replace tiles and. I'm sure you're aware that broken tiles can be a safety issue. And particularly Fowler, it's a lot of use. It's over twenty years old, the building, their original tile. They're either coming up, the glue is loose or they're cracking and chipping and, and coming up. And so it presents, presents a safety issue or tripping issue. Teacher device refresh, our IT directors talking about replacing. The, the, the laptops for the, the, the teachers. As you know, in the device world, two years old can be outdated. And we have not had the funds in the operating budget to replace these devices at the level. That they need to be done. If you scroll down, Greg, I don't know what's left there. So the roof.
So Wayne, I don't think we need to go line by line on this. I think this is just a very good overview of, of the. A sample of kind of things that we have in the pipeline. I don't know if there's anything in particular that you just wanted to call attention. Something you said just now, and I just maybe it would be helpful to highlight. The floor, the floor replacement. I kind of have looked at this like, at least far as like, it's one of those things that it's a large expense. It happens all, you know, we, we know it's coming down the peg. It's not an unusual. Thing, but it is a large expense that we shall always be understanding that needs to be replaced. The wear and tear today is a safety impact. There. And then I think that was really it. I don't know if there's any questions on, on any of this.
I had a question about the WAVM lighting. Being the chapter seventy four program, is there grant funding available?
Wayne, do you know any grant funding that's been for the WAVM? I know they've had something in the past, but I don't know dollars just to.
And is that something you can apply for? Cause I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm just looking for like the benefits of, and this is part of a different conversation, but. Your chapter seventy four program, so what does that afford you as far as any kind of grant opportunities or state funding or. You know earmarks from, from state reps or et cetera?
Wayne, do you have?
So I can jump in this. So that does, we do apply for grants and we do get some of them. We've gotten some recently. For the chapter seventy four program, we continue to do that, which is how we've done what, you know, the updates and upgrades for lighting that we've been able to do to this point.
This is above what grants are able to fund. Brian, is that accurate?
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I just have one comment to add is I look at some of these issues and it may well be that, that some of them. Date back to the design choices that were made. And I, I can only presume that you are, that everybody's learned the lessons from here as we go into the details of the, the green meadow design. A lot of these will look like they could have been avoidable. I'm not sure about floor tiles, but I know that the, the Fowler. Audio system and the auditorium that was being complained about day one, the building open. So anyway, just wanted to make that comment to, to stress learning the lessons that we see here as we move forwards with that design process.
Hey, you make, you make a good point. Something that we, that we noticed, we came up with the, like the Fowler HVAC, the auditorium, when we had our, our prior director facilities. Was that the equipment becomes antiquated also at some point, so that the parts needed for some of this are just no longer, or the company. Is no longer in existence or things like that. So I think at the time, cause he made up, it was a. Funny, like he thinks like at the time, you know, twenty something years ago, when the building was, he said, this was the, the thing, you know? You know, how do you know in twenty, thirty years that companies are gonna be sustainable? And that sometimes impacts your ability, like the. The life cycle of equipment. If you're not able to access parts to replace it as easily or it's no longer, you know, in use, you have to replace the whole system versus just. Piece now. One thing I also wanted to mention, which has come up this year for school and nothing that is. It's just new since a lot of our curriculum is now shifting from hard materials to electronics. So we have licensing. The price tags associated with those are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what we realize is that. With hard books and materials that way, sometimes you can kind of like go one more year. Like we can just tough out one more year with this book or some material. We're finding that as, as we are needed to shift to electronic, the license is up and that's it. Like you're not given, you're not afforded that. Flexibility and it would be for the whole curriculum across the board. So it wouldn't be. That in prior years, you could be replaced, you know, K through three or, you know, certain like that, this is where. We're kind of at the mercy of, this is the downside of the technology is that. You have to do, do, do renewal for the whole license at one, one bail split. So that is a shift in our, we don't have, you know, a quite a great response to that yet. We're learning as we've been upgrading our. Curriculum materials, but that is something that unifies that we're trying to make sure that we don't hit these cliffs. At every five years or however the contracts are for these curriculums, because there isn't. We don't have that flexibility to just extend it one more year if there is a budget constraint. I don't know if anyone in the school, Maro or Elizabeth, if you had anything to add. One of those sort of, yeah, good, right, good points, especially the curriculum. And Brian, thank you very much. I don't know.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Any, any other questions for the student? Anyone else from the school or anything they want to add? Julian's got a hand up.
Hi, I just had a quick question. I just wanna make sure I caught it correctly. You said that, did you say that these? Capital requests were already captured in the, the Capcom's in the ClearGov documents? I'm seeing nods, so.
Yes, everything that was on that was captured in the capital planning earlier present. Yeah, I think it was just.
Thank you so much.
School specific people, some people weren't questioning. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I do. You can just go right to the first slide. Second. Hold on, this is an actual PowerPoint, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna do this on the layers of, on the layers of stuff here. And I have a glare that gets. So talk some more yourselves.
Okay. No, I don't.
I can vamp a little bit.
I got it, I got it. I think my slide is the second prettiest stat at the Capcom. I did it already. No, everybody's done a, a great job, certainly getting, getting better at using numbers, doing forecasting. And so this is. My version of the same story. So this is an update of the. Benchmark community analysis I did a few years ago, for those of you who have seen that presentation. Go ahead, Greg. This time, I was fortunate enough to have. A provision of comparable towns to the Department of Local Services. So I didn't do the full analysis. We instead relied on, on DLS to provide these. But similar methodology, basically what they do is try to look for towns that are similar to Maynard over several demographics. Population, total size of the budget per capita income being some of the biggest ones there. Some of the major changes that DLS did when, when compiling their peer communities, as they're calling them. They narrowed the search range into sixty miles. So if you're thinking about an employee who is a town employee, who would be looking to go into another job, sixty mile radius. Restriction helps you look for comparable communities when doing some of these analysis. And they also restricted the search only to towns with their own school district, which helps on some of the school numbers as well. So you can see the communities there below East Bridgewater, Holbrook. I don't need to go through the list. You can see all the stats that were used to compile that by. A DLS, Maynard's not gonna be the same in every single category, but when you look at an average of these comparable communities, you can use, use some benchmarking comparisons. I'll call out one way that Maynard is particularly different. We are one of the densest communities of our size in Massachusetts. So that's an outlier, no matter which way you stretch it. But on a lot of these other items, overall size of the town and per capita income, you can get a good number of benchmarks to compare against. For the rest of the presentation, all of the data I'm providing is from the municipal databank. It's a fantastic resource to benchmark yourself against. Other towns in Massachusetts. And so if, if you wanna learn a little bit more, there's a wealth of information out there as well. Oh, and some of this from the DESI website in addition to municipal databank. Go ahead, Greg. So this is our, our general fund. I'll walk you through each color of the bar charts. We're gonna see a lot of these bar charts over the next five. Slides or so. For the dark gray color that you see all the way on the left, I've done a composite of the fundings for our, our neighboring communities. So Concord, Acton, Stowe and Sudbury. We often compare ourselves to our neighbors just by natural, all communities do, so I wanted to put that up there. The next bar over in orange is Maynard. And then the next bar over that is gray. That's an average of the peer communities that you saw on the first slide. So this is the benchmark or comparable communities to Maynard. And then the last bar over is an average of all three hundred and fifty-one communities in the state. So that's the central point for Massachusetts. Maynard's income per capita happens to look very similar to the income per capita average of Massachusetts. So that's just another reference point for us to look at for benchmarking. This slide overall is looking at our general fund. I think we are often used to seeing it in a line format, so it's helpful to see in, in a bar chart format right here. Couple of immediate takeaways, education is the dominant budget for not just Maynard, but all, all communities on this one. You'll see that our neighbors spend a lot more, oh, and by the way, this is all per capita. Our neighbors spend a lot more per capita on education. That's. Due more to the number of students rather than a student per capita budget. And I'll show, I think on one slide, some students per, spending per capita for. Education a little bit later on. And then the rest of the, I think I've got some more details on the next slide. So. If we take away education, which just allows us to see some more contrast on the other items. Go ahead, Greg. You can take a look at a little bit more detail once we get into these smaller categories. I'll direct your eyes over to the right hand where you're looking at fixed costs. This is primary employee benefits. This line goes to support both school and town employees and Maynard certainly is an outlier here. That's. Probably partially due to the benefit split that we offer as it's a lot of our compensation. So. That's, that's certainly one major driver of the expenses right here relative to these other communities. And then you can see on the right, we're also before the addition of the Green Meadows School, already outpacing per capita. All of these categories for our debt service spending. So this connection, obviously the previous conversation. And if we increase that, as, as just mentioned, we're around ten percent right now. So that's, that's. Just one thing to keep in mind is as we move forward, we consider the staging and prioritization of all these conversations. You can see the general government line, the police, fire and public works are the four kind of big. Categories for the rest and you can see the libraries and their human services and other expenditures. For the next slide, what I've tried to do is create a town line. So we've already removed the education. I'm gonna take out the fixed costs and the debt service. And so on our next slide, we're gonna do an aggregate of everything else, really the town budgets, just to take a look at where we sit. So we added all of that. What's generally called the town side. Again, the benefits have been pulled out, so you might see a small increase or to Maynard that probably would make it. Maybe more comfortable that state line and the peer community line, if you consider that delta and add it back in. But the, the major conclusions here is we're not, you know, outpacing our, our neighbors certainly on, you know, police, fire, DPW. And general government as we structure it in the, in the general fund. If we step through to the next slide, this one, there's a few changes here. Just wanna call them out. I'm no longer doing per capita, but per pupil. That's how DESI does a lot of their. Data reporting here and benefits are actually included in this. Presentation due to the way the schools report in their budgets through some of these municipal data sources. And you can see Maynard does outpace on a per student or per pupil basis, both its neighbors and the peer benchmarks and the state averages right there. Because education presumably because education is one of the largest expenses for all towns, there are several layers of data below this that we can access the municipal databank. In terms of breaking out these categories, but just by a total cost, what's really driving that delta between Maynard and some of these other towns are. Teachers, which is, you know, a factor, both the number and the salary for teachers, administration costs, other teaching services and insurance. And Natasha has invited me to a school budget subcommittee meeting later this summer, so I'll be happy to come and join you, present some of those more detailed. Slides from the DESI website there on that conversation. Did wanna take a look at, you know, where we've been, where we are today. So this is the difference between Maynard and that state line. Over the last several years, we're now spending about twenty percent more per pupil than the state average. As compared to, I think it was more like just under ten percent. In FY twenty twenty. So that has, some of this is a fairly recent growth. Relative to the state. I would be careful about that. Fairly recent growth relative to the state on that one. So. This is just where we've been. This. Doesn't necessarily say where that growth is coming. Could be student population, could be the lag in school choice and how that hits the budget could be the total funding amounts as well.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah, certainly.
A lot of our neighbors are regionalized. Does this factor in like their investment cost for students?
Yes, yes, I tried to take a, a proportional average for theirs. So yes, I did take partial account for those ones, but basically I included school districts that were regionalized. So you might get a little Carlisle and Decatur, Carwin, for instance. So it would have been impossible to tease that out completely, but it's a good call out. But it's also a, a nice that the DLS list had only school districts that were single town districts. So for that, like gray bar, you don't have to worry about that complicating factor. This is connecting to what David had mentioned earlier, just taking a look sort of at the cost of living or the impacts of the pinch, I think. Might be one way to describe it. Looking at average single family tax bills, which I'm using because it's directly available statistic. You'll see that Maynard, as I mentioned, is, is around the center point, but we are near some of the wealthiest towns in, in Massachusetts and probably indeed the country. So our, our single family tax bill is. So our, our single-family tax bill is higher than state average, but it is lower than our neighbors. And what I plotted out here, and Mike showed me some stats on this that I decided to chart out, is our average single-family tax bill as a percentage of income, and as you can see, we're just shy of twenty percent on this metric. Certainly far below our neighbors, who are able to use, you know, wealthier property values to take care or subsidize some of that. But also much higher than our peer communities or the state average right there. State average is a bit lower than this, probably due to the, you know, major cities that are going to be included there relative to our peer communities, so. I just learned to think about when we think about future spending, you know, every dollar is, is gonna hit people's pocketbooks, and we just need to be very cognizant of that as we move forward. Last slide, sort of just bringing it all together, and that's what I'm trying to do here, is, you know, we have new funding requests, I've got the bleachers and the DPW garage here. I didn't include Green Meadow since that's already approved and about to hit the books. Senior Center, I think that group has kind of shifted from talking about a building to a lease, already connected into perhaps some of the capital planning conversations. But for operational, we just heard about capital needs on the operational side. We just heard about school funding needs. Deputy Fire Chief is just one of the many examples of things on the town side that we've talked about. I've given Justin sort of his own kind of other line here with roads and waste management contracts and rising costs that also can fill into a general government. And then, sorry Peter, but I put water and sewer up here on a line. I didn't include in the staffs, so you're good, potential for stormwater utility. All things we've touched about that really need to be thinking about in aggregate as we do our future planning right now, and so just wanted to put that list together. And apologies if I missed anything, but I just wanted to hit some of the items that we were talking about tonight. You know, we have a good, strong, you know, volunteer base, we have development opportunities, several town-owned buildings are going to be going through a reuse process soon. We have Powdermore Powdermill Corridor Initiative, which just passed its first kind of phasing as part of the MBTA Communities Act at the last town meeting. And I believe they're coming up to one of the next two town meetings for the next sections of those. I would love to see exactly what we just heard from the Capitol Better Operational Models, and I think we heard a bit about that from Jillian just a few moments ago. We saw a more forward forecast from the schools, which was great to start to see more numbers coming out to that range, so we're getting better at looking at these numbers, and now we need to kind of bring that picture together. And so very much aligned with, with the messaging on this prioritization staging of needs as a team effort. When I kind of first came in and joined the select board, we sort of had that prioritization, I felt, and then with the Green Meadow coming in way ahead of what we anticipated, we haven't really had a good reset since, and so now that that project has been approved by town meeting, I think we need to drill down and really kind of talk about these needs, and I think everybody's mentioned that in some format or another tonight through their commentary, so. Just wanted to share some of the benchmarking work as we look to where we are before we talk about, you know, where we want to go next. And happy to take any questions.
General, one, just general, I don't know if you see more of the adjusted question, but waste management, I know that there's a task force, and that was something that's, where, is that something that we would?
Any. Any day.
Where is, where is that right now, the process or the recommendation, how that might impact operational future budget planning?
Yeah, they're still in development. It's a, it's a long process. If you go to committee, it takes a little longer. It's not admirable. The board just signed our last extension as part of our home contract. We anticipate that the task force will have a recommendation by the end of summer for the conversation for the potential special town meeting or annual town meeting to adopt an enterprise fund to support that. To help reduce some of the tax subsidies that go into that program, which that would free up money for all four committees here to understand where you want to reallocate that. But again, that's a recommendation from a task force that is only recommended by.
No, I, I, it's, I just know that, that had been a conversation, I think, brought up a couple of times, the joint budget review, and I, I didn't know that, so. Just thinking about, you mentioned about an enterprise fund for that. I thought maybe part of that conversation, and maybe I'm getting to it ahead, was that there might be a need for capital purchase or purchasing of, like, bins or something, depending on that as well, so that will that also be part of the end of the summer, because I don't know if that's on the radar for, like, expense.
So as John has alluded to, I probably put in ninety-eight percent of the category.
Okay.
And they've been documented.
What you were.
They've been documented for years, and so some of the conversation of why we still want, what's the meaning, the capital consideration is a priority to Capcom will be different than the priority to school committee, different than the department, it should be well represented. Some of these capital requests are also the day-to-day perspective of how we deal with some of our residents who aren't comfortable going to FinCom, having that conversation. So some of the stormwater issues, sometimes the litigation issues, the town being sued for an issue that we're not necessarily addressing. So having it documented for the conversation is important in many, many aspects. But in regards to solid waste, part of that conversation is to explore the opportunities. As I liaison that task force, because I wear many hats, part of the committee's first year was them understanding government, and then getting through that process for them to understand that when you silo, as Lindsay has indicated, which is the first approach to task force to, like, almost every task force that I've dealt with in the four years I've been here, they have that singular function, and that's all they focus on, and within that, they like to attack or go after their wants versus needs. So you always hear me talking about wants versus needs, what do I prioritize? Both works of need versus wants. So part of that conversation is educating not only their task, but how it affects the overall understanding of this town. Because like anything, those volunteers typically have a passion for that one process. And they're not just looking to reduce costs, they actually want us to weigh in services, when you have services that increases costs. So it's a balance of wants versus need, and how does it fit into the dengue block that we're all having to deliver it to.
So in, in late summer, I guess, when we, we have that information is, will it be, I guess, presented in a way that would be like, okay, this will be additional expense, whether that's money is a key to the enterprise fund to be determined, but we're gonna be freeing up operational.
There is the potential, isn't there?
Like, I, I just wonder if that messaging would, like, maybe helpful again for the public, I don't know.
But it will be, I mean, because it's an enterprise fund, it will be an additional fee for residents, so we're not really freeing up money as far as, yes, operationally, there will be additional money that, that the town can use.
The two and a half percent, generally.
But you're, you're gonna have, well, no, like, the six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars we typically use to fund the program for waste management. That's fine, but at the same time, if you're doing an enterprise fund, that means that we all have to then pay the six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year to get waste management to come to cover our trash.
Yeah, it's just a burden.
Correct.
It's a burden.
Yeah, it's not like.
Resident, as opposed.
No, and I, and I'm just wondering in a tiny way, so.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter how we pay for it, the burden is on the taxpayer, whether through an enterprise fund or through taxes or, or trash, the, the cost stays with all of us and our neighbors, it doesn't. We can talk about all that forever, but the, the bottom line remains, if it costs a million and three to buy, you know, the service of trash removal, it's a million and three that's shared and the burden is shared by the town, no matter what you call it, enterprise fund, trash stickers, or, or any other combination of the above. It's, it's, it's a moot point.
So maybe I'm getting worse than asking this, but if it's six hundred and sixty-five thousand that the town's subsidizing for, approximately, or waste removal, when all of us start paying that six hundred and sixty-five thousand, does that, does that mean there's six hundred and sixty-five thousand that is freed up in the general fund that goes elsewhere? That's what we're talking about?
That's, that's her point, yes, yes.
So yes, that's what that means?
Can I just correct this?
Yes.
That number isn't right, so it's about four fifty, it's about roughly.
Four fifty, like, four hundred and fifty is our.
What do you say, seven hundred?
Argument could be, there is a reallocation of funds, but the David, Chris, and Justine's point is you are technically adding a tax burden if it goes to something.
Yeah, I get that, that.
But yeah, so we're.
We're thinking four.
The general.
Fifty sits in the general fund and it's spent on something else.
Yes, and where, as your limitation is, does it all go to a bunch of erasers, or is it centrally focused, or what does that process look like? But ultimately, the goal would be to have the conversation of reallocation for something. That is priority.
I have a question. Going back to this one, the earlier slides, do we understand why our debt service burden is so much higher, like, per capita basis?
I thought about that same thing. I don't, I, we built the station you're living in, or you're sitting in, but like, we're not that long in town, that's built a fire station in the last twenty years and/or middle school, I'm curious as well.
We've built like four or five buildings in the last twenty years, I think.
Twenty years, sure.
But that's, I don't think a lot of towns do that.
That, that's what I'm presuming, is that we must be, we must be, that has to be it.
But if the recommendation is ten percent, everybody else is coming in at like six percent, we're the only ones that've been ten to eleven, isn't?
You gotta think they're gonna get smoked on the new interest rates too, right, in the sense that if we are building buildings, the lowest interest rates in our country's history, right? Theoretically, our four buildings should cost less than one building in two thousand and six, or one building, a quarter of a building today. All right, I mean, like, the idea is that the cost of debt servicing should be a function of how that's played. So just very interesting to see such a wide disparity. That was fifty percent compared to our peers', like, increase in the debt servicing, even over our neighbors, that's a big chunk of change. I'm just trying to figure out why. It's interesting.
Not sure. I'm also curious, and I don't know those towns that well, so it's.
It's hard, it's the way they fund, they plan on certain buildings, but they didn't have, actually bonded up.
I know their status finance.
Well, probably schools, and so like, they have a partnership with this state.
Do you have?
Or not just schools.
I have a question related to that. Are they reporting water and sewer as part of their debt service? Do they have isolated public water and public sewer? As our debt is extremely heavy on public water and sewer, and it is counted against our debt schedule, even though it is funded as enterprise. So if they are not a public utility, that will play a major role, as someone brought up, John brought up the idea of regional schools versus that process. So that service, if there's a comp community that's very close, let's say Stowe, I couldn't read that, but Stowe doesn't offer public water and sewer, so there, there would be no debt related. So just kind of think about that. I don't know if we got into that level.
I don't believe this would pull from the water and sewer, though. I believe it would pull from the general fund.
Would it be possibly, I know some uptowns, it kind of gets to that.
I don't know, but I don't believe so, no.
Our debt report, our debt is reported on, you know, our water, sewer, everything. Our general debt schedule includes water and sewer in the.
Well, let me, let me double check and check and see if that's the, the reason behind that increased debt service. That could be a potential.
Would it possibly be? I know I've seen in some towns, and I don't know if the ones represented have this, but they, when they do that, they do long-term planning for, like, buildings, and they have dedicated, like, over the year, they've put money aside into their, like, from their free cash or whatever, and it's years in the making, like, for a particular building before, and I know that we, we've not really done that. I don't know if that offsets how much debt because they have something that's kind of either every year they're putting, like, a school building, or they have a fire station, they've been putting money aside.
But that would be a significant devotion of free cash every year, which most towns don't have. We were lucky that we had Market Basket. A lot of towns don't have that regularity of, of just like a windfall. Not, I don't, that's a great point, and that could be. I don't think that explains.
Maybe it's a combination of.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think a lot of those towns are probably dealing with the exact same scenario as we are, and like, trying to figure out the same struggles, how to pay for everything under the sun and the cost go up. So, yeah, I don't know those towns very well. I saw one of the towns had a worse credit rating than we do. Why? No idea. But because I looked across the list, they have all the same size budget we do, we have, but something could have happened that was out of their control. And, and so we have our good days and our bad days, our good years and our bad years. I think it's, I think it's good to ask those questions, but if nothing else, just to be a lesson learned. Like, this is what happened to them, and we need to do better. I think, I, my suspicion is all those towns that are of comparable size are smaller, and they are probably also dealing with how do we do better debt management, how do we do better capital planning? And, and we're, the fact that we're having this conversation means we're actually doing really well, because some towns, they don't want to touch this.
I know just very high level, not to get too much in the weeds, but some of those have maybe comparable fewer buildings, like, for schools, you know, they might have a K through eight building, and, you know.
That's what I wanted.
I know, I know. Partying is to put salt in the water there. I know, I know. But I, I, I do think that sometimes that's the case, you have fewer buildings that you're, you know, that are combined, I don't know, a station, fire station combined, that might, you know, the resources in that case might also impact. We don't have a lot of combined resource buildings in Maynard, and I think that's just a town decision that we need to, which is not great.
Back to the point of looking again at asset inventory and planning long-term so that we can be, right, planning needs in tandem for greater cost savings and efficiency on a longer-term basis.
I don't know how many times I'm having this, this type of meeting, but I know that started to talk to Kate Hogan about senior centers and DPW garages, and the things that we, you know, we need and we see in the future that are gonna be a need for this town. When you start to talk to her about these things, when you run into a different places, you call her and talk to her about it. It's every town, it's, you know, I don't know, what the number was, three fifty-one communities?
Yeah.
So there's that number of communities, and it's that, that, almost that number of communities with different problems. Yeah, there's, there are communities that have different problems because their budgets are in the, you know, the hundreds of millions, but they still have the same problems, according to Kate, and and that's, and that's the problem, and she's got, you know, three small towns, and she's doing her best to get, get us more funding and earmarks and grants pushed our way, but every community ship, we don't, we're not alone. Regardless of what, you know, numbers may show someone more or less than we have when it comes to debt or, or other things, and some, some towns have different, you know, different receipts coming in every year, but at the end of the day, every town in Massachusetts is in the same position, fighting for money, you know, with very few exceptions, but it's, I mean, but I think if you talk to Kate Tate about it, she will tell you that this time we have more of these meetings and more of these conversations than anyone along this, which is a good thing, at least that's her opinion now, because we talked about this particular meeting, I don't know, we were maybe in a relay for life last Friday night or something, and it came up, you know, and she said, you guys have a lot of meetings to talk about it, so, which my other times did too, so at least we're we're having the conversations, and the conversations have started, and so much good information to come away with tonight from every, every group and everyone in the room that put into it is well appreciated, but we're not alone. Anybody, anyway, thinks we are, I don't know, maybe they're an island, and alone we are not, so. But, I don't know, I, I appreciate everybody's effort. Greg and I, you know, this came up in our February eleventh meeting in the annual budget review meeting, and this, this was a, I think it was John might have suggested we do this meeting with all of us, and so we did, and this was a result, I think it was a great meeting. And to Lindsay's point, I think we need to do it again, I don't know when, but when we get some more information from that trash group, it's just been wasting time for months. You know, wasting is my own words, right, so. Anyways, but I, I don't know if anyone else has any comments, or anybody else has anything you want to say, or ask, or break, or even a little bit, you know, feel free, we'll, we'll, not, you know.
Can we, can we kind of pencil in? I'd like to maybe think about next steps from here. I know that we have everyone in the same faces, and Justine also explained that, too. Thank you for all your years of service. Those are your last laughs. Meeting, but I, I just wondering if we could, if you think about pencil something in, because I, I do know that we're gonna be getting into future planning, and when is the best time to meet?
So, so like, next steps, right?
Yeah.
What, so this meeting will trigger some questions in some people's minds and, and, you know, lead them to what they see as their next step, maybe like, you know, we get together in our next set of meetings and have that conversation, what, what are the next, what are the next steps for the, for all of us in, in, you know, headers down that road? And if there's any groups that decide they don't want to participate as a board or a group, they don't have to. But those of us that want to participate will participate, and that's the way it goes. And then, and then anybody that doesn't feel as though they want to participate, they don't have to, but when, when the, when the clock spins around, that's, that's on them, not us. I, I think it's Lindsay made a comment about not wanting to add more meetings to people's schedules. I'm almost feeling that this is going to be a quarterly meeting.
I agree.
Did you say quarterly?
Quarterly. I agree.
I don't disagree, because I think it's important enough, and if we get too far apart from previous meetings, we lose any kind of momentum we have. And I think, I think we need to stay together and really start planning about the next big thing for us, happens around October-ish.
around October-ish. We go out and start talking with all the boards, all the town departments about what they need. I think we need to be able to funnel that back in before our plan, then we present to Greg, January, so that people are convinced that particularly, or they're finally planning for anything for a special, um, meeting. So I think the next one should probably be early in September, I would think.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the, the quarterly, but I also would think that, you know, um, it's, you know, the chairs of each board have a discussion amongst the board members, because there's a lot of people here, and to get, you know, to get this many people in one room in one night is, is a, is a good thing. But it's not always easy, and then, you know, um, in September, are there, are there people that have other commitments in time? So does it, does it say we send three members from each group, or two members from each group? I know we have the budget subcommittee, but this is a kind of a different conversation, so do we, you know, do we pare it down to that type of level, or do we keep it full boards? That's, that's what, that's everybody's decision, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know where I'm gonna be in, you know, September or whatever, whatever weeks and all, you know, all that, so that's just, scheduling is tough. I mean, it's, it's fantastic, we can get this many people to come and, and a couple people online to participate in a, you know, on a Tuesday night. Just, you know, not out of the blue, but it's important, but it's, it would be great to be able to do it more often, but I just don't know that we'll get this number of people depending upon the time of year with the vacation schedules and, you know, work schedule and everything.
Can we talk about the format for the meetings, though?
Sure.
I'm, I'm just gonna be blunt. I didn't love this meeting.
Okay.
I didn't think there was enough discussion. I think David had the best point early on.
Thank you.
Wait, I said, you always want to get along. But that we need to have some serious discussions about priorities.
That's, that's what this was about.
I don't, I don't.
That was, that was, so.
Nice for all the topic for discussion. No, you can't, because I'm gonna tell you what the original request for agenda items was. What does each, what does each board see as priorities? That would have been a priority. You're talking from the one group that didn't make a presentation. That was. And the first request for agenda item was, what are the priorities of your group?
Okay.
And, but, but, but there was no presentation. It was a very simple request, and everybody else in the room understood it. So I don't, so now you're gonna say you didn't like the meeting. That's fine.
Okay.
But the request was very simple. It was four words. One of your priorities is a board, and, and the, the result was, we don't have a presentation. But now you want to criticize everybody else in the presentation?
No. I want to criticize the lack of discussion, and we as a board discussed not having a presentation, so there would be more time. So my question for this group is, given this long list of things, are bleachers the thing that should be on the agenda for this fall at three point two million dollars? That would be a real discussion that I would be very interested to hear other people talk about, that that's a prioritization thing.
I, I agree with your comment.
Maro had her hand up.
Well, I, I want to, uh, also include that I, I feel like, like part of the next steps is, this was great to ha- have a better idea of what, as a town, we have, um, you know, the, all the, all the things that we need. Um, but we also need to, to take into account the, the taxpayers, and how much the taxes are going to go up, and how that's going to, all of these things, how it's going to affect each one of us, including all of our constituents, and how we're going to frame any of this to get buy-in. Um, and so I feel like we also need to talk about that part of it maybe at our next one, or maybe at the one after that, but I feel like that also needs to be part of the discussion.
Well, if you want to have that discussion, that's fine too, but that discussion needs to take place before September, because by September, the warrant for the fall is already decided. So if it's gonna be a conversation to follow up on people's comments and, and talk about, you know, three million dollars for a bleacher, whatever, you know, that number, talk about, that's that creep number we were talking about in a couple meetings, it keeps creeping up. I don't know what the number's gonna be when the final, final tally comes in, but if you're gonna have that conversation, you want to talk about bleachers, well, there's better be a, a mid-August meeting. Right? Because, yeah, I think, because if not, it's gonna be too late to get onto that warrant, you know.
So I'm saying that the school's plan already, and if there is any feedback that this is not a good plan, because this has been kind of worked on, is that the school is resubmitting a CPC application that is due by July first, and then CPC is going to be taking that under advisement, and I, CPC, I'm sorry, just to make sure I know their. Get our acronym straight.
CPC, yeah.
Um, and the CPC is going to be taking that under advisement to, um, hopefully get some funding for the fall meeting, and the difference would be a debt exclusion for the fall meeting, followed by, um, which is gonna have to be known by August because the ballots have to be, um, printed for the election, so, uh, if there's any hesitation about that plan, I would want to know right now that that, if there's a concern with that, because there are, you know, certain um, statutory requirements that we're coordinating with the state to get ballot done, um, at a minimum. Uh, and there's a lot of work on these things that we're paying a vendor for.
So, I guess the question I would have, and I, I honestly, I haven't gone to PINCOM meetings lately, and, or, or school committee meetings, but after the meeting that we all had together, were there any changes taken into consideration regarding any of the, um, concerns that were brought up? And so those have been incorporated, and so has the price been lowered, or?
The, um, the, the, the loss of the major takeaway, the size, so there was a seven hundred and fifty, it was looked at as a, a sizing, and then there did allow some saving for the bleacher, um, didn't get below the three, but it was, um, that there's certain, um, easements that you really will be lost in the leap for one, that will be triggered because of the capacity. So there were some, and I think it was great feedback, um, that is part of what we'd be submitting to the CPC as part of our comprehensive resubmission, I guess, for their, um, their information.
Natasha, what, what, just for, just for knowledge sake, not for argument's sake, what is the, what is included today, right? Like, in that, in that process? I know, I know bleachers, but what are, what are the other things that we're, we're, um, you know, not adding necessarily ourselves, but having to add because it beats code and it meets the stated requirement?
The, the restroom facility, um, and the ADA requirement for the, I guess, the accessible path, so that we're doing at the entryway, um, that leads to Great Road, and then um, that intersection right there, they're gonna make a ramp, since, um, municipal parking. Um, and then there's, the only, um, add, I guess, is that there's part of, there's a concession piece, which is part of the bathroom. That would be the only, um, outside funding, and it's, um, they broke down the cost of what that would be.
So to follow on that, just, because it's the first time I've heard it, and, and they're saying ADA accessibility and compliance off of, um, Great Road.
Yes.
One seventeen. The majority of people that go to events at that field park down below the high school, do we have to provide the same from there up?
No, um, so that won't change. It was because the, the, this is part of the new coding, and now that we're rebuilding, is there a certain feat of parking has to be within a certain proximity to the facility, and parking at the high school was extended beyond that to consider, uh, I guess, for the capacity of the bleachers. So that's in a very paraphrased way. Um, that's where we were able to rely, because that was municipal parking at the Boys and Girls Club. There was not me, there was not a need to change. If we could use that to count in to what you need for one of accessibility parking for your facilities.
So, so I guess, in order to meet that need, that when you have an event, a live event, does that become temporary, um, handicap parking for the event? Only because they've taken half of that lot, made it into, you know, a play area or whatever else.
And I'm gonna defer to Justin a little bit, because I know he's been part of these meetings, because, yeah, Justin.
Oh, Natasha, I can just be blunt. So, um, as part of the high school build is, there's special permit requirements that require excess amount of parking with occupancy load of the high school. In regards to the bleachers, it also requires special permit, as this is a functional facility that requires occupancy. Um, we were able to actually reduce the costs by utilizing the municipal lot at the Boys and Girls Club, which is outside of that fence lot. So technically, that parcel's two parcels, if you're unaware. The parking that surrounds the outside of the Boys Club is actually the town manager's. The parking inside the fence in the facility is the Boys and Girls Club. So it's actually split parcel, if you really want to know the history. That was the old DPW site. That was the old garage, and then it was split out, and that's how it is. But we were able to reduce the cost burden, Chris, um, for, um, inclusive parking. And then, kind of to add to Natasha, she really nailed most of it. Just completely reminded that that also includes the press box, um, and an elevator lift for ADA accessibility to that press box as well, so you hit the nail on the head.
So do we, so do we, do we meet, will we meet the, the minimum number of spaces handicapped wise here?
Yes.
Will that include, will that, will that necessitate adding more spaces? You know, that, or changing existing spaces to handicap, because then what does that do to a regular man? No?
No, no, and actually, I will say, so this is a local planning situation, and Chris Arsenal was not here to defend himself. The planning board really took this into consideration as a whole municipal, uh, project as well, and they were able to waive some of their criteria within their control and authority to help reduce the cost as well. So the planning special permit actually went very smooth for the town manager, and actually had a very limited mitigation factor in regards to that, to this project, as referred to this, Chris. What's the real driver here is the sheer fact that the plumbing code changed after COVID, that require a bathroom facility as an auxiliary process to the occupancy load of the bleachers. And if you are unaware, there is currently no sewer to a facility over there as well, so there's utility drivers that go into putting in a bathroom facility.
Chris, just to also add to the bathroom thing, because this was feedback that came about, um, that they will be adding in a family room. I don't know if this came, this was part of the conversation, but um, which will allow more control over having one bathroom open versus all of the bathrooms accessible, so, and it will, I guess that was feedback that, uh, the planning board, um, also had with the battle of, um, having a, a family room there.
So also, within the, within our process, um, and our design criteria, we're looking at modular, so the bleachers are modular structure, the bathroom facilities are modular structure. We, when we have that capability in a facility's realm, it reduces the overall cost load. What you really have to understand here is, this is a major project. You're talking about structural support changes, you're talking about some part of the changes, utility complexities, which really drive the costs here. So, I mean, I, I would say, as a member of that task force with Natasha and several other members of the community, we have focused on reducing the cost burden, and really focusing on the needs, not the wants. So as part of our conversations with the modular facility, we have facade options. We've really reduced that down to the bare bone minimum concrete, which is thirty strong, fifteen year life expectancy versus a twenty year. You know, those are the conversation pieces Mike brought up earlier. I could argue that majority of the issues that the school is currently dealing with, the fixable is, because we were as a community, aiming for a need certification under MSBA to secure two more percent, which drives in proprietary products. Over time, proprietary products drive up costs in operations. This could be, I don't want to get into an argument here, but this is why some of the arguments against the all-electric school will put into place, not because we as a group didn't want to consider that as a possibility for sustainability, no overall climate goal. But really, what it does is when you match today's policy of the driver for a town that doesn't have this kind of money, it's hard to be at the forefront of innovation, because it gets you on the back end. On operating thirty years from now, the, the lighting system that Wayne is talking about, I'm fully aware of, it's a building operation control system. The engineer was in California, they don't exist anymore. And most of our building operation control engineers don't want to touch the syst- which is now taking a building operation control system that probably cost the town five thousand dollars to replace it. It's close to fifty to a hundred, and in that meantime, in the past ten plus years of that high school, we've been paying excessive amount of electricity bill because we can't get the system to work. So those are the conversations Mike brings it up, when you're talking life expectancy. Please be reminded, a lot of these task force, we do go through these exercises. And it's not always pretty, not everybody gets it right. I guarantee the green metal, the second we build it, someone's gonna point the finger and say, why didn't you do X one? You do what you can with the information that's in front of you. I believe that if we have guidance from our stakeholders, I think Natasha can definitely say this in regards to the bleachers. We hear a number of the com- community members talking about pricing as a, as a factor. I think our central goal was, what do we get the biggest bang for our money, and reduce the wants and focus on the needs.
I, I think, I think it still doesn't answer the question, you know, this conversation has been nice, but it doesn't answer the question. Is that our number one priority as a community? And I don't think we've answered that question, and I think we have to, and I think as leaders we should, and I think everyone's afraid to say the key answer is no.
Well, I think it's, I want to say everybody, so the school is.
So what I said was, everybody's afraid to say the answer is no, and I think everybody thinks it is.
But I, but I'm for that everybody.
And I don't think we're talking to one of the streets, so.
I'm talking to students, I'm talking to their parents.
It's a wonderful thing to markets, we can vote on it anytime we want, and the town can vote on it anytime we want, but we can have the discussions. And I would, based on the conversation I heard so far, without getting into arguing about who's doing it, who's, who feels which way about it, it's, um, a Zoom meeting, the second week or first or second week in August, on a night to be chosen, so we can argue together and have the conversation. Make that the top of the conversation, it, it, you know, the bleachers or, what is the town's priorities? I think that the capital planning committee, you know, laid it out pretty well, what, what the priorities of the community are. They didn't lay them out in order of what they are, but they laid out what they are, what exists, what's out there. We know there's, you know, um, untold millions in water issues that we have all decided we didn't want to talk about tonight. You know, but there's that, there's a DPW garage, there is, there is, whether it's a senior center by lease or by building, you know, deputy fire chief and those things, those, those things will play out, but, but the capital needs, you have bleachers, DPW garage, senior center really should be, at least in my opinion, we, we ought to slide that up into the cap, up into the capital thing at some point, because you know, lease is, lease probably isn't gonna get us too far, but we'll need to do something more permanent at some point.
I will say that any board, as a board, has a recommendation for the school committee regarding any project. I would welcome, vote on it as a board and submit it for the school to consider, because I think that's the problem, is we hear different feedback from an individual member or different community members. We have people in our task force who think that the project is tuned out, that we're pushing back on, that we should have been in joint field, and, you know, we had somebody in our meeting recently who talked about looking at the tennis court, so we're really trying to keep it narrow about, based on the select board's um, advisement a couple of years ago when we first started this, like, not having the creep, but it is depending on who you ask, the needs are different. We had someone at town meeting who, you know, gave their own passion about tearing it down now, um, and so how do we balance all that is, is not an easy task, but it's something that can be made on a way. I'm like, let's just not prioritize it now. That's not a plan. I think we need to come up with a plan. If not now, what is the plan? Because as we realize, it, cutting it down is costing more money, it's a safety issue, and we all have to accept that that will be all of our, all of our vote on that.
So two things. Um, one of the, uh, pieces of material that we submitted for this meeting that hopefully can be shared afterward.
Oh, more ducks already.
Okay, great. Is the list of prioritized projects from pay-as-you-go funds. So I encourage all of you to take a look at that, because I think what you'll see in there, most of the things are meant to come out of pay-as-you-go, so that would be free cash, that would be some of the other funding sources that we mentioned. But I think that there are like four million dollars in stormwater issues in there, in that neighborhood, sorry.
And that's just the surface.
And so, like, as we've articulated, free cash will never pay for that, nor will a capital line item. So, you know, to point blank answer your question, or just to, I think, thinking back on what you're saying, David, if, if if we're gonna go to the town and say we need to raise your taxes to pay for things, I think that we have to be, we're disingenuous if we don't say the things include bleachers, the things also include a senior center, things include a DPW garage, and then things include stormwater drains, and they're like infrastructure projects. That if they fail, which what I understand, they are close to failing, will cause much more damage, will cause rogu damage, will cause personal property damage. And that's where this collective conversation needs to happen, because if you ask me, I'd say, I don't know, find some money to turn the bleachers down so that there isn't a safety hazard there, and fund the infrastructure that's about to fall apart. And so that's, again, where the collective conversation really needs to happen with the group, and I totally appreciate everything you're saying. There is absolutely a desperate need for some bleachers, it's a mess over there, and I think everyone has identified that. That is obvious, because everyday people drive by it. So then they drive by it, and they look at it, and then they're reminded of it. They're not driving by a broken stormwater drain, so, or stormwater project. So, I just.
Yeah, the, 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 yeah.
Again, this is where, like, we. So I just, yeah, again, this is where, like, we also need a senior center. That is, you know, that's been made very clear and laid bare multiple times, probably everyone's room over and over and over again. And so I think we just have to be thinking about these things as a holistic process. And it's not to say that, you know, I think we shouldn't have bleachers, I think we should have bleachers, but also I do think that we should have water infrastructure. And if we are going to present these things to the town and say, we need to raise your taxes, we need to raise all of our taxes because we need to pay for more things, I feel like we are disingenuous if we don't find some way to articulate the whole picture.
I think that's right, hold on, like, because I think the town wants us to be looking at it from a holistic perspective. I think as a resident, my resident head, you know, I would, I don't want to see one project only at a time. I would like to be thinking that to see like, how are we looking at it from a long-term planning? And I would like to see it not just be about one department only that we're trying to tackle all this effort. It really doesn't do, I think, justice to our community by doing it that way because then we're not really being thorough in our analysis. Also, everyone's needs are going to be different.
But it still is, we can only afford to do some projects at a time.
Right.
So we have to prioritize and just because we, we, we don't have to come up with a thirty year plan in order to fund something this fall, but we do have to say bleachers are absolutely the highest priority. And that's the only thing we're going to fund this fall.
Or we have to say bleachers are the priority in this moment and we have to raise your taxes to pay for them, but also PS in the spring, we're going to need to raise your taxes for a DPW garage.
That's, that's.
It's, it's either or conversation to some degree, and it's giving people all the information.
We need a plan, they want to see.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing for funding one or the other. I'm just saying that it, it's not, none of this happens in just the singular bag.
So.
So it's presenting all that information so that people understand, because I think in the moment, people care and like, oh God, we need new bleachers, I drive by them every day and disaster and someone's going to get hurt. And so they do, they do hear that and they hear that appeal, but I think what the, the further context on that is yes, look at all these other things that are equally important and not more important, your day-to-day existence, that your tax dollars are going to come.
But by the town leadership endorsing bleachers for the fall over stormwater, whatever it is, we're saying this is the most.
Yes, that's the part, you're right. And I don't know how to do this in a budget at a town meeting, but again, I feel like the town leadership needs to present the whole conversation.
But the question is, outside of presenting it to the thirty people in this room, what, what's, you know.
We're the ones who are supposed to know the most, we should be making the right recommendations.
What did I understand? And I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing anything that anyone said. I'm just saying, so now we've, now we've got that, right? We've got, that's what we've decided we need to do. How do we share that with ten thousand people that live in town? That's the problem. Because this group of people in this room, right, and probably forty others that volunteer on your board and your board and your board and all these committees and come to these meetings and pay attention. We've got, we've got, you know, nine thousand nine hundred and sixty people we need to share that with. And how do we get that information to all those people? Like you have to get it out there. I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, saying we need to do these things, but it's not, it's just a question. How do we get that information to a majority of people in, within our community so that they, so that they understand exactly what lies ahead of us? We understand.
Yeah.
Well, no, I get that, but, but what outreach?
But we're never going to get ten thousand people to be that involved.
You're not.
We're the most, well, I don't know, we're the people sitting around the table who are charged with making the decision. And I think if we made the decision to put forward the bleachers, we're saying the tax is the most important. We have the power to say, no, we're not going to do that, what we tried to, am I?
But, but the only time they hear from us as a group is the third Monday in May and, you know, second, third, fourth, Monday or Tuesday in October. When do, you know, how do we get that information out to everybody that has a vested interest in knowing what's going on, what should be every family in town? And I know you're not going to go reach every family in town and we talk, and we target management, select board meetings about warrants and how we get them out, but how do you get that information to everybody?
So, no, I, I'm going back to what you said originally, Peter, I learned a lot about people's priorities tonight. Through the presentations a lot, and in particular, people's priorities I may have already known, I got more quantifiable, right? I think, I think I've sat in touch with a bunch of subcommittee and learned a lot about her priorities by seeing some of the numbers in the school committee. So we're there and I absolutely do want to hear more about priorities from people whose priorities I don't quite understand right now. And the income is probably the biggest set on that right now. I, I should say that I'd be curious. Probably because I hear these guys talk every other week, so I, I have a pretty good, you know, little bit to snip of the conversation. But thinking about that holistic picture, I, I think we collectively realize we, we shouldn't do everything at once in terms of that, right? The, the pinch on people's pocketbooks is just too great to do that responsibly. And even if we wanted to, I don't know that we can do everything at once. You look at Acton when they just had their recent operational override that passed by like forty something votes for a substantial, substantial override there, but from what I would argue is a better fiscal starting position for which that make that ask of their constituents. So we, we do need to have that. So when it comes to talking to the town, I think, I think we need to talk to those people who are coming to town meeting, and I think we need to bring some subset of what we saw today. You know, what I really like is that capital graph that showed, here's the plan if we do this, can we do one for operational, can we combine the operational, can we put that up at the beginning of town meeting and say, here's the impact if we do not just bleachers today, but next spring, you know, there's plans to come for, you know, an override, whether that's for school operational or for a capital line item or for a senior center lease or what have you. And that way you can avoid, you know, schools, the bleachers aren't the most important conversation. They're the ones that we're ready to go with now, and we think the most important one is what we're coming up to in the spring or two springs from now. But we want you to have visibility on that before you vote for bleachers today, today being the fall in this situation. So we have to find a way to set that up. And so it's not just going into the fall and saying bleachers is the most important, it's the one that's ready to go. The most important one's coming in the spring. So when you vote for this, be aware, this is what's coming down the pike. And there's a lot of prioritization conversations that, that need to happen around there and we need to frame those. And using some of these numbers, I think, is something we should start bringing. Not necessarily to the ten thousand people, but at least people bring to town meetings. And if we do better at that, you can bring people into town meeting, they'll have a better understanding. Or be more invested in what that future looks like. The last kind of thing I want to say is some of these conversations that we're having, getting rid of bleachers, they're not the black and white. I mean, bleachers, DPW garage, they're all or nothing. But in terms of how much we put into capital, if we have an operational override for the schools or the town side, those are shades of gray. So if the schools come and say, we need eight hundred thousand dollars, we could figure out, we can fund them at none, four hundred, eight hundred, one hundred, one point two million, right? Those are all options we have along the continuum, same for the capital, right? One point two, one point five, two point five, you know, whatever that amount is. So some of these are shades of gray conversations. Some like DPW garage are black and white conversation. For me, I think we need to find some way to get more operational funding into the capital budget. That, that should be pretty clear and I hope that came across to everybody. And then, you know, you can't go by that DPW garage and say that that's not going to be a need online. So I think that needs to be kind of built in. And then we have to figure out how to stage the things around at least some amount of gray capital funding and a DPW garage along a reasonable timeline.
Would it be just a five?
There's my priorities, please, Craig.
Sorry. Just, just thinking about the education piece a little bit. So I know like the school is working on, because we get questions about the project of, of having like signs so that people can click on it and read about the project. But I do feel like there's so many other projects, like it's not just, it is the most visible. Nobody can see the pipes, right? Unless you're in your own home and you're having issues, but is there a place where there could be some type of like, would you like to understand our, you know, our capital planning, you know, projects in the pipe that are, like, people are going to be startled by that number, you know? And I think that there's a value to shock a bit because then they, when they understand that we're asking for a fraction at town meeting, we're really not chipping away at the true overall need. And I just think that it's, I don't want to say like we're hiding information, I just think about, we need, there's not a lost opportunity in pushing it out at every moment we can.
It's like a marketing campaign.
Right, like this is what, but like the health of our.
Don't worry about that.
Like a town meeting, like the health of our, you know, here's our state of our mayor or whatever we want to do. And like this is going to be what would preface.
Is that an appropriate agenda item at town meeting? Just like something that's not clearly to me as a president?
I, I think there are, are a number of boards, a number of committees that have outward facing publications. For the senior community. That, that I think the town, this thing that learns these marketing pieces, needs to have a marketing piece on the state of Maynard, future needs of Maynard, and it all goes out through these different vehicles. So that's one way of informing people, whether they show up at town meeting in, who knows, but at least they can't say they weren't informed. And I think that's what you hear a lot of, we didn't know, I didn't know, well, pay attention. And, and use some of that ability of, of different boards of outreach to people.
To answer Lindsay's question, the town moderator wants no such thing in his meeting. And that was, that was something that we had hoped to do. And it was, you know, well, I can give you ten minutes before, if you come at six thirty and, you know, there's no one there and, and he does not want to use town meeting for that purpose, that you, that you just asked the question. He has been reluctant to allow us to share that type of information. Right back this year, we ended up putting like a one page, you know, missive into the, into the warrants and that was all he wouldn't allow.
That was really helpful, but.
Yeah. We do that.
Now that's, but that's, 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 we're, we're limited.
If the town moderator is petitioned by many people, would he change his decision?
Maybe a few is five.
No, I don't think so, but, but, but we're welcome to try, we're welcome to try between now and then. And, you know, and I think maybe if, maybe if, you know, he was presented with the, the numbers that we see before us, he, maybe he would consider it, but as of yet, he has not been willing to allow much, I mean, you know, there was a couple of things that we wanted to do as a board that he wouldn't even allow us to do. There were, you know, five seconds, ten seconds, it just didn't fit his plan.
The other option is you could send out, you know, maybe not with the warrant, but in that way to, to everybody. You know, a flyer that details what, kind of what we're talking about here. You know, we, as a school, just, is probably at the coming week is, is putting out a banner, you know, with a QR code for people that if they're interested in learning more about the bleacher project. So, I mean, there, there are other, there are other ways. You know, we could put up a banner, you know, over by the mill about, you know, if you're interested in what the town is dealing with, take a look at, you know, screenshot this QR code and it'll take you to the website to give you more information.
And another component to that is to ensure that we are indeed actually reaching out to all the different communities within Maynard, just on a circular justice issue. There are a lot of people who are perhaps the most affected by small changes in cost increases. Who for various reasons may not be in touch with the kind of communications that are out there on the moon. If we don't address that, then I think we're being very deficient in, in our service to, to all of those communities. I think that, that speaks partly to the kind of community that, that Maynard is trying to be. Is it trying to be affordable, I hate that phrase, but, or, or is it trying to uplift its overall services, which inevitably go to customer and make it less affordable for the people that we might want to work with? So I, I just want to make sure that communication plans, which I, I incur are a necessity. I think we need to be more inclusive of, of more people rather than, as Chris said, the, you know, forty to eighty people that might be involved. So I would advocate to make sure that as we do that, make sure that we're being fully inclusive and not just for whether it's parents of children or supplement.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot planned at once, right? So there's a QR code you can put up, there's Facebook, there's, there's flyers you can put out, there's, you can blanket all, all of these ways, you know, you have some communications that go out to all these, you know, access to already. But I think that it sounds like it's, it's like a cultural shift. It's like what I'm, what I'm hearing is that it's not going to be just like a one-time shove, that this becomes like a cultural shift so that people have a way to access this information from now on. And I imagine that's like a website that's linked to the town in a way that's very accessible. And then there's sort of an ongoing rolling understanding of what our town priorities, priorities are and where we're putting our money and why we're putting it there, what we're thinking we're going to have to come thinking about as time goes on. So that, because it's not like, like we have bleachers and we have all this water to do and we have all these things and then that's it and then we're done. I mean, it's going to like, you know, we don't know what's happening next twenty years from now, we have, but this is an ongoing progress that takes forever. So I think that if we have a culture shift and we're having these quarterly meetings and the town, and the town is more aware that we're all talking about it and what these meetings are and what, what's coming down the pike and they have a way to access that, that then people are going to become this marketing campaign, that that is important. I think it would be good.
I mean, yeah. I mean, I know you guys have done an amazing job of entering all of these projects in there and like start with, you know, maybe kind of last, did you want to see the projects that, you know, we're talking about and like, let's get people, I think it's about getting people's attention first.
Right.
Um, not like everyone's going to solve anything, but I think we need to get people that are always on the radar to inform people so that maybe we can have more turnout at town meetings. More interest at our respective boards, I think these conversations come much, because I think what happens is people go, oh, I don't know, and then, you know, it's time to vote. I mean, I went to the school committee, we have a budget hearing every year, we have nobody who shows up to our, a budget hearing for the school. But yeah, obviously the school budget is always a very hot topic of conversation in our town. But, so like, I think there's more, you have them just kind of repetitively, you know, out there.
Yeah, and I think it's, people just assume things are running over heads in a way that they don't have to think about because they can't find to think about it until they're like running off the cliff and then they go. But so I think that it'll be open to another.
So. Uh, just a comment and observation. One is that a couple, a number of us sit down and talk about this at one of these, before the pandemic. We've had three of these meetings last May, February, April, the day. And the observation I have is that we never list the priorities and hold each other, you know, what's your top three, what's your top three, can we combine those? And I for one, you know, when we're trying to make an advantage to try to inform people, get them to actually pay attention to the information that's going to be shared at town meetings, if we're not, if the moderators are going to let us skip that, which I think it's horrifying. I think we need to find a way to do that. So. But if I am trying to write this month to month, all Jack is or other people on our, in our group, if this group as leaders and stakeholders don't give us a few priorities that we can then ask more detail and get factual information out, then we're going to have, in my opinion, a bleacher conversation. I mean, I asked at town meetings, some of you may remember, what's, what's the fifty thousand studied for? And silence from anybody about that it was going to be on, you know, the, the October meeting and this is about the amount that we're asking for. And so even in that forum, you can't get an answer when you know there is one. So what are the priorities? If it's going to be, like, I, I, I struggle with what you said, Jeff, about if we're going to do the bleachers because it's ready and then we're going to do the other things and I'm going to pay, the average Maynard citizen is going to pay twenty-five percent of their income instead of twenty. Do we have a problem with that? You know, I mean, there's got to be something we prioritize based on our capacity and our ability to pay. And this team right here has to create it. I, I just, that's my objection is that if you go to another meeting like this in August to make sure we can do bleachers, but we haven't really prioritized the five steps, prioritize, figure out the funding of the next steps, we're really not making profits. So I've been at it for a long time with you guys who know me, I'm very positive about our chances. But I'm very disappointed that we don't get to the point where we say, what was the outcome of this meeting supposed to be? And what are our priorities that we're going to focus on as a team, not thirty-five of priorities, thirty-five at the most. So that's just, I'm sorry to ask everybody, but.
Fair criticism, Bob. I think you can't have another one without what their outcome in this and what's on the board, you know, what's on prior and.
It's, I know it's getting late, so I don't want to be long with it, but it sounds like we're most likely not going to come to a priority list tonight. It sounds like we're probably going to another meeting before the September warrant. And I guess from a legal perspective, because I don't understand how this works at the town. In business, when you have this happen, you have to have a hundred people, you put out a poll. Right? You put out a poll across like email and you say, here are the projects, here's the description. Everyone anonymize their answers, you collect the poll and you do it. I understand there's the legal requirements associated with the town boards doing that. You were to put that out to the finance committee, four boards here plus CVC plus others. You get your forty members to talk about what's your prioritization, anonymous, no offense, but I'm sure some people are a little afraid of speaking up in this room. No offense to anybody, but there's a lot of personalities. No offense to anybody, but there's a lot of personalities in these rooms. And I think it's, the idea is just, why don't we just get something out there and say like, what are the forty people in here think? And then have a conversation about how are we gonna market this? How are we gonna talk about this? Do we understand why this is? And again, I know there might be a legal issue, just sort of having a communication that goes out there, so someone that's a lawyer or knows lawyers to tell me.
Well, it's funny that you say that, because I think that, I was just thinking that, um, one of the things that I, I kinda would have liked is, um, is almost the way that C P C does it with their ratings, but give it to all the boards for us to look at.
CASA?
Yes, I'm sorry, CASA. But yes, and give it to all the boards for us to sit there and say, all right. And I think I will, I will admit that after six years of, of doing this, what I have a hard time with, with prioritizing is that I have a hard time with the end of it. So it says, okay, I can say, I understand bleachers, I understand, um, I'm gonna take stormwater out of it just because in theory it could be an enterprise. Um, but the DPW garage, let's just say DPW garage, um, or an override. What does that look like to the taxpayer? And I think that's what sticks me every single time. I can't get past the fact that, I don't know how much this is gonna cost, so I can't tell you what it is as priority. So I think that's where.
On the communication thing, I think we could do better putting costs on things. So, you know, we keep saying three million dollars for bleachers, ten years at five percent. We should be talking about, that's a, rough numbers, sixty bucks a year.
Exactly.
For ten years. But I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm guessing, don't always do this out there on the.
Information is available.
Yeah, it is on a project.
Okay, sorry.
And I, and I wasn't, that wasn't just slamming that, saying that's.
So to the point about the, um, survey amongst this group, um, there's a little bit of concern, Greg, because I just asked him what's that thing we do? That, that may, um, violate a, a, an open meeting law type of thing where it's, or somewhere. But anyway, if somebody was to wanna see individual people's input and everything, you know, it would, it would not likely work the way we intended to.
It's a possibility.
He can look into it, but.
Just trying to think about it, yeah.
The other thing is, if we're, if we're gonna follow up on, um, Mr. McCarthy's comments and, and some of the other points made about a priority, you know, if we're gonna try and schedule a meeting for the first couple of weeks of August, if everyone's agreed, we'll do that, then we, you know, each board should come with a stream. What are your three priorities? You know, across the town. And, and by the way, um, the, the schools might decide that their priority is not a bleacher, it's something else. You know, so we get, you know, um, at least we have twelve potential priorities, and we, we start the list from there. Start the town's priority list from that point and go forward.
If, if I could, if, if it's between bleachers and eight hundred thousand dollar deficit next year, if you're revolving from schools, I would think that, I mean, if it's either or, because we're out of the capacity to put that on the burden of taxpayers, what would you guys vote? What would I vote, right? I mean, and so that's, I think exactly what you have to do, to start weighing among ourselves, what are we gonna say, it has to come first, even if something else looks like it's red.
Well, and the other part is that, um, so like, for example, the storm, storm or the sewer problem we have, you know, it's gonna cost us money for the taxpayer to fix it now. But then what's the burden if we don't fix it? You know, because then there's a huge, a bigger problem, and then how do you weigh that in? You're thinking about the cost of the taxpayer.
It's not proceeding also comes to cost. So I think that's the part we, we wanna make sure, like, you know, we don't fund it now, but, each project will grow, you know, exponentially as you, you delay.
Well, there are just gonna be two different scenarios. There are not, like bleachers, for example, not missing several years ago, that caught, you know, the cost. Another, another thing, because of like externalities, states didn't really have anything to do with us. But in the case of infrastructure projects that don't get dealt with, when they break, that's like a whole other set of costs. So it's, it's the, um, you know, whatever the, the cost, the risk of doing nothing cost is, but that has many different factors that come into play.
There's some external forces, ain't really be able to comply with, or they also start paying legal costs.
So, some, somewhere, foresee around somewhere.
At the time to get a mandate from state or federal government that we get fly with, they usually put some kind of legal requirement tied to it. Start paying fines, so. And it's all unfortunate, but I think at the end of our presentation, there is a list of priorities, if anybody can look at that. You want the, the spreadsheet that we use, we can get that to each, each board.
Thank you very much. I know I have, over the years, it's seemed one person to, a person, but I, I think that you guys have done a really great job with, um, particularly the line of data, and a, and a very more, let's say, easier read way, but, um, easier than it has been, and certainly, um, gets really good conversation, that I think we just needed to do the priorities, like we need to pick up where you, where you're left off.
One last one, real quick. The marketing comment, um, we've talked about that a lot in the past, we have started an effort, we've got a fifty thousand dollar. See, try to coordinate marketing and promotion of Maynard. More to come, um, in the next couple of months, but let's, I wouldn't worry about that. I would worry about getting, feeding us content, or what we can share with communities, like thriving of the bleachers, so a lot more people show up at town meeting, more.
Do you have a marketing effort intended to attract people outside of Maynard or inform them, or is there some, to vote, it's got multiple different priorities?
And all of Maynard, not once, not the cultural list at home, but they would be coordinating the.
Is marketing what, the, the value proposition of living in Maynard, or the downtown district, or all of these capital projects? Do you have any specific?
It's a big, you know, enchilada return. So, but for me personally, it stemmed from all my learning, which is really one, one thing, you need more revenue, right? How do you go out there, like, worry about water, just we need new development, you know, and you sort of pull that together, but the biggest part of it is getting all the partners who will vote, to understand the weight of some things over the other. And to your point four or five times tonight, you gotta show the whole thing. Hard work, but it's not impossible, and as soon as you have a model for it one year, you only adjust it the next year. I think we just have to commit to it, and it has to be based on a shared group of stakeholders who are brave enough to say, these are our priorities. You won't like some of the costs of them, but, um, here's why it has to happen, and are you on facts, not on emotion? Anybody else?
Are we in a position to propose dates today, or is that something we wanna leave?
Uh, I can, I'll take a look at it. Share, we'll chat, Mr. Johnson. But Mike, in your new role as community communications liaison. Anyway, I know, we're gonna get great to kind of, you know, find out what's best for everybody and set something up really.
After the. I love the idea of a big screen TV right on the old fire station. Yeah.
This will play, I mean, motion.
Seconded.